Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. This is a school board workshop and the time is one P. M. Sergeant Arms, has the lobby been attended to?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Our student representative this afternoon is Jose, Jose Videl. Jose is a senior at South Fort Myers High School. He has a unique educational background because he has moved numerous times since elementary school. However, this has allowed him to become adaptable to new environments. Jose has been at South Fort Myers High School since freshman year and has been actively participating in the programs and extracurricular activities. He is the brigade commander for J. R. O. T. C., senior class president, and is a member of National Honor Society. Jose intends to become a member of the Navy by completing his training at the United States Naval Academy. Please welcome Jose. Just excited to introduce him. We have nine items on the agenda today, starting with food service, construction change order report for October two thousand twenty-four, job descriptions, elementary and secondary school emergency relief, who are known as E. S. R., investment returns and investment strategy, insulin litigation presentation, board advisory committees, public comment, and good of the order other business. Per board protocol, I want to remind everyone that just strive for four minutes for initial comment, two minutes for follow-up for a total of ten minutes. Madam Superintendent, are we ready to begin for the first item?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is food service. If you want to do the introductions.
Yes, we're very proud today to have our team, who I'm going to let them introduce themselves and talk with you a little bit about our food service, please, ladies.
Good afternoon. I'm Candy Messenger. I am the Director of Food and Nutrition Services. This is Sarah Cox, Executive Director and Business Services, and Amy Carroll, who is one of my coordinators in Nutrition Services. While I'm presenting, we also have food samples that are, will be handed out to you. They're bringing, they'll be bringing them forward. So we would like you to enjoy them as we go through our presentation. So what you're being served is Big Daddy's Pizza, the orange chicken and fried rice, taco roll-ups, and then we have the pull-apart and the pancake sausage breakfast item along with a brookie, which is a dessert. The governance of Food and Nutrition Services Department has federal guidelines that are, that are required, similar to academia. The federal oversight is the United States Department of Agriculture, the State of Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, F. D. X., the Florida Health Department, who governs both supper and snack programs, and the Florida Health Code. The local oversight is the School Board of Lee County. School nutrition departments are separate from the school district's general fund and education budget. The school nutrition budget funds school meals, salaries for school nutrition staff, kitchen equipment, staff uniforms, and other items related to school nutrition. The chart is representative of the reimbursement that we receive per meal served. Breakfast and lunch, as you see, has two different reimbursement rates. The top number is what we receive as the free rate for our free meals, and the bottom number is the full paid reimbursement that we receive. In the next couple of slides, I will explain to you why there are two reimbursement rates for breakfast and lunch. The Community Eligibility Provision, C. E. P., is a non-pricing meal service option for schools and school districts in low-income areas. C. E. P. allows the nation's highest poverty schools and districts to serve breakfast and lunch at no cost to all enrolled students without collecting household applications. The Identified Student Percentage, I. S. P., is multiplied by a factor of one point six to determine the local percentage, percentage of meals reimbursed at the federal free rate. The remaining meals are reimbursed at the federal paid rate. There is not a reduced price meals that are claimed by C. E. P. This chart represents the reimbursement rate percentage per C. E. P. formula. As stated, there is not a reduced reimbursement rate for C. E. P. The goal in grouping schools is to get the most reimbursement for, for the meals. As a district, we can regroup when we see the percentage of economically need shifts. The data is gathered during our October data collection and our April data periods. Our department runs a direct certification process monthly. So on this slide, for instance, in two thousand twenty-four, the bottom line, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, we have eighty-nine percent that is paid out at the free rate. So for breakfast, we would get two dollars and eighty-four cents per meal, and at lunch we would get four dollars and fifty-four cents per meal. The remaining ten point five percent for breakfast, we would receive thirty-nine cents per meal served, and we would receive fifty-three cents per meal served at that ten, ten point five percent of our full meals that we serve that month. Food and Nutrition Services oversees eighty-six locations, employing seven hundred and sixty-six dedicated school-level staff and twenty-one district office personnel. This exceptional team is the backbone of our success. From the frontline staff to the administrative team, each individual plays a vital role in ensuring our students receive nutritious meals. My role as director would be impossible without their tireless efforts and commitment to excellence. Having worked every level at the, within Food and Nutrition Services, I deeply appreciate the hard work and dedication of our entire team. They are the true heroes of our department. A summary of this slide. Lunch participation has shown a steady increase over time, with a temporary decline in school year twenty-three due to Hurricane Ian. Breakfast participation has remained relatively stable within these four years. The summary of this slide is the Food and Nutrition Services is focused on achieving financial sustainability by balancing revenue and expenses. This includes monitoring reimbursement from the Community Eligibility Program and implementing cost-saving measures. Offer versus serve is a provision in National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program. This allows students to decline some of the food that is offered. The goals of offer versus serves are to reduce food waste in the school meal programs while permitting students to decline foods they do not intend to eat. At breakfast, school, schools must offer students five required food items and at least the minimum required amounts. Under offer versus serve, a student must be offered at least five of the food items and must select at least three of the food items, one of which must be a half cup fruit or vegetable for offer versus serve. At lunch, schools must offer students all five required food components and at least the minimum required amount. The components at lunch are meats, meat alternatives, grains, fruits, vegetables, and fluid milk. Under offer versus serve, a student must take at least three components that are in the required serving sizes. One selection must be at least a half a cup, either fruit or vegetable.
What this slide is talking about is that all school meals, the School Breakfast Program and the National School Lunch Program must adhere to nutrition standards set forth by the U. S. D. A. And a lot of people aren't aware of this factor, but there are limits on calories, sodium, fats, and beginning next school year, sugar, that we have to keep within those constraints. There's also weekly requirements that we have to meet, including every single week we have to offer a red-orange vegetable, a dark-green leafy vegetable, and a legume. These are all required by the U. S. D. A. as part of a healthy diet. And I just want to make a comparison between one of our school lunches and a popular lunch you might get at a fast-food restaurant. So here we have whole-grain chicken nuggets, tater tots, which count as a starchy vegetable, apple slices, a whole-grain roll, and a one percent milk. You have that equating to five hundred and twenty calories and sixteen grams of fat. If you look at a popular fast-food meal that a child might get, you have your five chicken nuggets, your french fries, sliced apples, and a milk. Here it's six hundred and forty-five calories, twenty-six grams of fat. So you just jumped up ten grams of fat and a hundred and twenty-five calories. None of it's whole-grain, and it's all deep-fried.
There are a total of fifty-nine locations serving supper snack, a super snack or supper. In the month of October, the daily average of the super snack meals served was one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. With supper, the daily average was one thousand two hundred and sixty-six. Reimbursement rates are the same for both sup, super snack and supper meals in the month of October. Food and Nutrition Services is looking at all costs associated with the meals that we serve to, to the students in Lee County. We meet with the vendor that supplies the super snack meals twice a year to ensure that we are keeping up with the students' preferences. On this slide, you'll also see our after-school snack. We currently have six under the Twenty-First Century Grant Program, and then we have eight community sites that pick up from five different locations, and then we have two schools that are still under the after-school snacked program. The reimbursement for supper and super snack is significantly higher, and the amount of food that the student receives is also more. Student, the super snack meals have five meal components, as stated previously, for lunch. After-school snacks contain two items, either a fruit and a grain or a juice and a grain. What is super snack? These kits contain components of the supper meal. Variety provides students with more substantial meals, but also keeps it simple to serve as a snack. Why Food and Nutrition Services moving to super snack versus after-school snack? The feed is because we have feedback from the schools that it was concerned that students was not receiving enough food with their school snack, after-school snack. The meals can be served anywhere on campus, not just in the cafeteria, and using this format will help with the labor expense that allows Food and Nutrition Services to concentrate on breakfast and lunch meals.
And when we were searching for a vendor for our super snacks, we decided to go with the same manufacturer that services Blessings in a Backpack because, because those are very well received by the students. This slide is comparing K-12 to commercial foods. K, there's generally two lines of food when you think about food manufacturers. There's a retail line and there's a K-12 line. A lot of food manufacturers want to get in the K-12 world because they know that the students, there's going to be brand recognition. So when you think of companies like Kellogg's or General Mills, they are, they have two lines of food in their factories, a K-12 and a retail, because their K-12 line has to meet the standards put forth. So the Pop-Tarts that your child may receive for breakfast in the schools, you cannot buy in the stores. So, I'm sorry, will you go back real quick? If you look at the K-12 foods, like I said, they are regulated by the U. S. D. A. They have to be whole-grain, lean proteins, lower fat, and lower sodium. Starting in next school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, there will also be a restriction on sugar. Where commercial foods, you know, the taste primarily comes from the fat and sugar, so it is going to be not whole-grain and generally higher in those items. So back to the Pop-Tart example. This is just a comparison of a K-12 Pop-Tart to a retail Pop-Tart. The biggest difference is going to be that it's made from whole-grain, it has no high-fructose corn syrup, and, I mean, it's not, it, it, it's relatively close in calories and fats, but the whole-grain and the no-high-fructose corn syrup make a big difference. These are the pull-apart donut holes that you guys were served, and again, it's just a comparison. K-12 is always going to be generally less calories, sodium, sugar, and always whole-grain. I'm a comparison of our applesauce. Again, if you look at the Zizzi's Blue Raspberry Applesauce is a super-popular choice with the students, and it has zero added sugar, where the Mott's has, I think it's twenty-two grams of added sugar.
So this slide is what we have set as our goals. Financial goals is to increase participation in both meal programs and out-of-cart sales. Collaborate monthly with finance to optimize revenue and reduce costs. Transition to direct delivery for high schools to eliminate the seventeen-dollar-per-case delivery fee. Our operational goals is to implement Edison, which is an automated inventory program to streamline inventory management and production record-keeping, and foster cross-training amongst our district staff to ensure understanding and efficiency. Our student engagement goals is to expand student feedback beyond taste tests, testing, and including broader surveys for increased inclusive representation engagement. Engage with student groups to gain insights and tailor offerings.
These are just some highlights in the Food and Nutrition Services Department. We were, starting this year, granted four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Sprouts supermarkets to help with our Healthy Living Collaboration and our school gardens, which are growing exponentially, so we can get fresh produce directly into the cafeteria. It makes a world of difference. We were the first school district in the country to ever be given this amount by Sprouts, so we're honored. We were also given ninety thousand dollars by the collaboratory downtown to help fund our school garden. So that's basically over a half a million in one year, and we're continuing to grow. The other article is every year we do a crunch event in celebration of Farm-to-School Month. This year, we, the students crunched, you crunched the produce, sweet potatoes grown in our school gardens. We did it at three elementary schools, and we had students karaoke-ing about sweet potatoes. It was just such a fun event to highlight what they're being served in the cafeteria. National School Lunch Week, every year in the fall, we have National School Lunch Week, and in the spring is National School Breakfast Weeks. And this is just highlighting these national programs, and a lot of times we use it as a time to offer new items and do like a district-wide taste test and get feedback and just different things, because the students do get menu fatigue, so we try to vary it up. And then our Healthy Living Collaboration, which I mentioned earlier, is basically a collaboration within the school district. Our mission is to improve overall health and increase food security for our students and families, and it's a collaboration between Food Nutrition Services, Comprehensive Health Education, Environmental Education, and Career and Technical Education. So many of our high schools have an agricultural program, and it's basically using your gardens as a living classroom, STEM curriculum all throughout the garden, bringing that produce into the cafeteria to foster our smarter lunchroom movement. So it's kind of a full-circle initiative, and it is going amazingly well. These are some actual pictures from our cafeterias of different things we serve. Prior to COVID, we were very big into fresh fruit and vegetable bars, like you see in the center. COVID kind of messed things up for a little bit, and that students couldn't serve themselves, et cetera, et cetera. But we are getting back to our fresh fruit and vegetable bars, and as you can see, there's pasta, there's chicken nuggets, there's always salads, and every student tray that comes through that line has to have a half cup fruit or vegetable.
So we would like to invite you to visit any of our schools for a meal, breakfast or lunch, and I welcome your feedback as you go out to the schools and see what's happening in our cafeterias. Are there any questions?
Before I turn it over, thank you. Before I turn over the board members, Madam Superintendent, is there anything you want to add before we?
Yes, thank you, just, just very briefly, if I could. So just want to, first of all, thank our team for being here today and for sharing not only our delicious lunch, but also some information about our food service program. We really appreciate that. And I just want to kind of underscore a couple of things that I think are important. One is, you know, looking at the amount of money that you have received via grants and other opportunities, generating income, which is refreshing, nice to see, so thank you on that. And just a big kudo around our, kudos around our school gardens, so I know that our students get that opportunity. And if you think about, back in the day, I had a wonderful grandmother who had me do gardening, but I think it's a lost art. I think so many of our children don't get that opportunity to participate in those types of activities, so just major kudos to you and your team. And we'll now turn it over to the board members for their questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Board member comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Persons?
First, I don't know how y'all do it. The logistics of this must be absolutely amazing, because you, it's not like you call up the grocery store and say, I need this tomorrow. I mean, how far out do y'all have to order your food products, make sure you have a supply? And is your supply chain working out okay?
The supply chain is working good now. We're able to get everything, but we lost our door-to-door delivery service. So because we had to hire a freezer company and a trucking company, we're ordering probably three weeks out.
The gardens are great, and if I can continue one more thing. I even helped plant some, but, and I went to one of the crunch. And it is funny, because some of the students look at them like, I can eat that? Because, but they do, and they say, oh, this tastes good. So there's a lot of produce being sent. Do you have any idea how much from the gardens, tonnage-wise or pounds-wise?
Last year, we did a little over seventeen thousand pounds.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
And just with the Sprouts money, this year, we have set up four full gardens at four schools. Now we have fourteen, and our goal right now is to get them consistently being able to furnish their cafeterias with that produce, and then continuing to expand.
That it, Mr. Persons? Anybody else? Ms. Jordan?
I just want to say that you, I've been down there, I've been that whole production on how you do fish order, and maybe that would be a great avenue for the rest of the board to kind of see how you actually do that. I was looking at the one, slide three.
Catering, what is that? Catering for, for who?
Like a lot of times, we have one right now at Benita High. They want to do like a holiday spaghetti dinner for their school staff.
Right.
So we will order the items, prepare, prepare the food, and then it's just like a catering function that will be billed to them. We are just catering and preparing the food.
And then that money goes into the, to that particular school? Because it's not like the culinary classes, so. So, that's why I was, when I saw catering, it was like, where does that fit in? And where does that money go to?
The catering revenue is just documented as just that into the food service fund. It doesn't necessarily go back to that school. It just supports the overall food service operation.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do.
Ms. Langford-Fleming?
Thank you for putting this together. I appreciate it, and thank you for cooking for us today. I know that a lot of work goes into this, and I get so many emails and conversations about food. So, I'm not trying to sound harsh. I just know that we can always better our game. The last slide you showed, I've never received a picture like that. And that would be my expectation, actually, sending my child to school, especially with the Sprouts organization donating. I know that they did last year at a couple of schools. And I think that every one of our schools should have a garden, K through 12, quite frankly. I've been to a middle school, elementary school, and a high school garden. And they, they, you know, obviously, they're more advanced the older the age. So, the problem is, is as much as I appreciate you cooking, not one thing on this tray is green, orange, red, yellow from a garden. So, that might have been helpful perhaps today to see, you know, what our gardens are doing and the, basically farm-to-table concept. I love that concept. And growing up in a farming community, I remember days where the lunch ladies would come over and say, "Now, did you eat your peas?" And I would scoop them under a napkin, maybe, but I still tried to smile and say yes. So, I, I mean, I know we can't do that any longer, but the fact that it was there and somebody tried. I have an app that I use for work, and it inputs and outputs exactly all of the macros of a meal. So, while I put that, this meal into here, and I know it's gonna be really close, because they're very specific, but just in this meal alone are over 85 carbohydrates. And carbohydrates make children very tired and adults. While they're healthy, as long as they're healthy carbohydrates. So, I love to hear that we're gonna have lentils and, and maybe some more brown rice on their kids' table. I think that's great. You just have to remember, some of these kids eat at 10:30 in the morning. And then they're expected to continue to sustain high academic achievement throughout the day. So, carbohydrates equals sugar. Sugar is that high, and then they crash. And for one meal to be about 1,400 calories, that's a very high-caloric meal without a whole lot of nutritional output. We know protein is, I mean, everybody knows, you know, you want to balance the protein and the carbs, while both are important, and the lesser the fat, the better. I have gotten an email and on social media messages and texts about the blue raspberry sauce, of why it's blue. I went and looked at the ingredients, and I've tried to find out where the blue dye, is it blue dye? Is it natural dye? Because I can't find it on the label. Like, what number do you, do you know?
It's blue dye, it's not natural dye.
Oh, it is blue dye, okay.
But more, they're moving, the K-12 lines, you can see them keeping up with trends. They're all moving towards the natural dyes, beet's, turmeric. So, we're seeing that even with the Kellogg cereals, only for schools, not yet out in the retail. They are moving towards those natural dyes.
Okay. And I appreciate you giving us the balance between, I think you compared it to a fast-food place on slide 12. I would probably, I'd love to see, instead of comparing it to a fast-food place, because I know I can't afford to send my kids to fast food every day, what an at-home meal looks like. So, I would want to perhaps see those two lined up together. Not school food versus fast food, but maybe school food versus what an at-home meal would look like. That's just where my head went. And then my other question through the chair to the superintendent. We have a lot of vending machines in our schools, and I think that's great. We're, we're creating an opportunity for kids, especially kids who are really active. They're really hungry about now or after they've left the house. What kinds of items are in those vending machines? Are they packs of Snickers and Skittles, or are they granola bars and nuts? Do you?
Yeah, I'll weigh in on that. I'd love for staff, first of all, do you have that information? If not?
The vending machines are operated by the schools, and this is a big source of contention, because it is competitive foods. So, generally, they are stocked with Coke, Takis, all that kind of stuff. They are not to be turned on until 3:30. I mean, sorry, until 30 minutes after the end of the school day. But we're finding that they're on all day. But food service, we don't run the vending, vending machines.
And so, that point is well-taken, because I'll just share as a, as a mom, what I've seen in various schools, and just as a principal. There are schools that have tried to focus on healthy choices, water. I've seen some of those at schools. And then I've seen what you alluded to, which is the sodas and all of that. So, it's an opportunity for us, for sure.
Well, and, and like I said, none of this is a knock against what your department's doing whatever, at all. I just, our goal at FSBA was to be the best. And number one in academics and nutrition, what we're putting, the overall experience for our students. So, thank you for answering those questions and putting this together.
And our salads are from the gardens. Our primarily, our primary produce coming from the gardens now is lettuce, tomatoes, and peppers, because it's a quick turnaround. The lettuce can be harvested every six weeks. So, when that garden lettuce is served, either in a salad or like on a sub, the participation goes up exponentially, because you can tell it's coming from the garden right outside the door. So, the salads in that picture are from our gardens.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Juveneli?
Thank you. I think I tried everything, I did, actually. And it's good, but, thank you, Ms. Fleming, because it's not fresh. I mean, that, that's the thing. And I haven't ate like this in a while, so I really just blew my diet thanks. But it, and actually, it was all tasty. So, I would really be curious what the student rep thought of the food, because the kids are the ones who've been telling us that they're not happy with the food. And so, that, for me, is probably the most important. I want to hear from you.
So, the, I haven't actually had, ate this food. I'm doing wrestling, and so I have to watch what I eat. But I have had all this in the past before. And obviously, it's up to personal preference, what people like. So, like, what you served us, I like some of the food more than the others. But I wouldn't say any of it is bad, like tasting or at all. And actually, the presentation opened my eyes into new information and how you guys really benefit the schools and the community. And what Ms. Fleming said about, you know, seeing gardens in all of the schools. I think if I experienced that in like my middle school, growing up, I think that would have, you know, helped me a lot more in like the way I ate and like watched what, what I took in. So, I think if, you know, more kids, you know, could realize how beneficial you guys are, I think it opened a lot of their eyes as well. But, um, yeah, I mean, it's, I think the food is just up to a personal preference. But I think everyone should be grateful that, you know, it's free food, that you're being served.
And part of our initiative with school gardens is when we get that produce in the cafeteria, there's a program out of Cornell called the Smarter Lunchroom Movement. And it's all about using the cafeteria as another place of learning so that kids do understand where their food is coming from, how it benefits their bodies, et cetera. Because like you said, a lot of, a lot of people have no idea, students and adults.
So, not every school has the fresh garden, so only a few schools are getting these salads. So, I think that's really key to the garden situation, because I love the concept. I'm very supportive of that and learned a lot about it when I was on that Healthy Living One liaison or whatever you want to call it. That was, it was great. And, and that's grown, and but I, and I'd like to see it grow more. But it's not, it's not just growing it, you got to get it to the table. And that's where y'all come in, because that's hard. That's a hard, have enough food to go out, to, you know, get through all the students and everything. So, I look forward to seeing more fresh. And, and I'm probably gonna eat this, I don't know, the rest of this. I've ate the top of that cupcake thing, and that's delicious. So, thank you.
I'm gonna ask some questions if the board is all right with it? Okay, thank you, everyone, first off. I don't need this answer right now. For the Community Eligibility Program, are we seeing any trends of where we may, wait, where we may be at, excuse me, next year? I know we were watching with a watchful eye, I guess is the best way for this year. So, I don't know if we have any trends or anything at the moment.
I am currently working on the groupings to see how we can assess. And I'm working with the state to make sure that we are getting the best possible reimbursement that we can.
And to add to that, we use Survey 3 data to calculate those groupings, which is the February Student Survey. So, once we get that information, that really helps us plan for the groupings for the subsequent year.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm gonna kind of piggyback off Ms. Langford-Fleming as well as Ms. Juveneli. And I appreciate you all. I have three kids in this district that eat these meals every day, so I get lots of feedback, especially on the chicken sandwiches, by the way. But looking at this, again, and I appreciate all the cafeteria staff, they're amazing, especially all the things they went through COVID. And, you know, it's important that we treat those people as, you know, as just amazing people that they are. So, but getting, you know, the, the thing that comes up for me is how can we do better as a district, kind of going off what Ms. Langford-Fleming said? You know, one, for example, that we looked at, for example, is, I mean, still the snack, it's still a Pop-Tart. It's still lots of sugar in it and stuff like that, donuts, things like that. I know it's a better version, but I know a lot of it comes down to funding and choices and trying to pick for everyone. And I'm not asking you to necessarily answer this now, because it's on both the administration and the board as well. But how can we do better for this? Because I know there's, you know, kids, obviously, a lot of these kids, this is where their main meals come from out the day, and some of these healthy choices aren't there. I, I love the garden program. My son went through it at one of the schools, in fact, and I think that is fantastic. But where are kind of our opportunities, where we can, you know, help with that? I mean, we, we all get correspondence and emails and things and to that effect. So, that's kind of my general question to all of us, actually, I guess is the best way to say.
And, and COVID, during COVID, it was hard, because when we had to move all the meal services to the curb, there was no prepackaged, like hot breakfast, high-protein items, for instance. And we all in the school nutrition world went to the manufacturers and said, "These items we are serving are way too high in sugar." I have parents call me, and they would be like, "This breakfast has 80 grams of sugar," and I could not disagree. So, over the past couple of years, our biggest request to the food manufacturers, especially at breakfast, was to give us more hot items with protein. And we are getting more into that, and we're looking to go more back to semi-scratch cooking versus the heat-and-serve. That's gonna be a lot of training. A lot of our staff, the younger folks, don't know how to cook like we did back in the day. So, it is training for them and baby steps. You know, maybe next semester, go with two semi-scratch recipes and then expand from there. So, we, we do know in the past few years that the meals have been high in sugar. It's been nationwide.
Thank you. That was music to my ears, and I'm sure many of the board members as well. So, that's all I have. I appreciate you all. Anyone else want to give any comments or questions before we move on to the next topic? Ms. Jordan, briefly?
And the pictures, of course, they're staged pictures. And I think that people eat with their eyes first. So, when the kids are seeing, you know, looking at their food, and that's what they snap pictures of, because of course, this is, takes time to make sure that they all look like this.
Yes, and, and that was everything that was served that day. And you might have a student just get the, you know, the chicken nuggets and an apple and a milk. So, every tray's not gonna have every component, but that was what was served in that kitchen that day.
Yeah, that would be your complete meals.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the meals. I was able to try some of it as well. Thank you all, I appreciate your hard work. We're gonna move on to item number two now, which would be construction change order. Whenever you're ready to proceed, Mr. Rickenbacher.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm not seeing the presentation up in the folder here. Do you all have a handout?
Yeah.
Unless Jen can find it?
Yeah, we all have it on board docs.
Good afternoon, board members. Superintendent Carlin and Esquire de Play Bruno, this is your October of 2024 Change Order Report required by statute that we give every month. And if you all have the handout while we're waiting for the presentation to come up on board, it's a pretty small one this time, and I know your time's valuable today. On the first page, we had direct material purchases. That's where we bring the money back into the district, and we provide the payment for the materials directly. We did $358,959.34 in direct material purchasing, which returned to the district $20,553.68 in tax savings that comes back to the district coffers. In regular change orders, non-material-direct-purchase-change-orders, we did $7,305,804.87. In contingency adjustments, contingencies are embedded within the capital projects. It's a shared contingency between the construction manager and the district to support any unforeseen issues. And we had expended $15,511.42. And if you go to page two, the second page, is the breakdown of all the change orders associated with this report. We had two DMP change orders for Gulf Punk Construction at the Veterans Park Academy of the Arts, for roofing materials, Suffolk Construction at Riverdale High School, purchasing of kitchen equipment. And both of those returned $20,553 to the district. We had four standard change orders, and you'll see the large one there, the biggest one that'll pop out at you. That is the lease expenditure for the temporary Hector Cafaretti Campus. That covers us for the duration of the construction build for the lease payment of the portable campus. And we had one contingency adjustment down at Riverdale High School for some added onsite rooms, fire pendants, and associated equipment. Are there any questions?
Board members, comments, questions, concerns? Ms. Langford-Fleming, then followed by Mr. Ribble.
My only comment is I really love when we have money returned to the district.
We try.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to comment, I spent a half hour with Mr. Rickenbacher yesterday. I enjoyed every minute of it. And I was totally shocked, as, as Ms. Fleming was, about getting money back. I've never, I've not seen that. I was so pleased with the way you manage our money and are accountable for each and every statement on the, on this sheet. And it was, it was time well-spent, and I thank you.
Well, again, it's money that comes back that helps provide seats, so.
Well, and I wanted to echo the sentiments of Ms. Fleming and Mr. Ribble. First of all, thank you, Scott, and thank you for my very first workshop, Bringing Money Back to the District. That was perfect setup on that, and we'll, we'll, checks in the mail, right?
Yes, ma'am.
No, all kidding aside, that's what we're doing as a, as a district right now, is working very diligently to find ways to return revenue and any other operational dollars and capital dollars back to the district budget. We know we have priorities. I've been very loud and clear about those priorities, keeping us very focused as a governance team, as well as our, our leadership team and our entire district, on what's most important. And that includes student achievement, teacher recruitment and retention, safety, you know, being fiscally responsible, and that, that's what goes to this particular return to the, to the district. So, thank you, Scott, and thank you, the board, for... Education, Chief of Safety, Security, and Fleet Operations, and Director of Internal Compliance. At this time, I'll put it to any questions or comments that you may have.
Board members, we look forward, we have had conversations about this in our one-on-one
briefings, and so we look forward to any additional questions or comments. We stand ready to answer those questions.
Board members, any comments or questions? Okay, Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Actually, I have two. The Coordinator for Transportation is, that's a new item, I mean, a new position?
Yes, that is correct.
That is correct. And then, when I was trying to, I apologize, I was running this morning, I was looking at it, and there was a lot in this job description, and I know that is our job, is to make sure that we go over job descriptions and to put these into place. But, what exactly, as far as, is this in the budget? Is the money in the budget for this position? Have we budgeted for this?
All positions that are coming forward, we have discussed with budget, and we are prepared to move forward with those. So, yes, the answer is yes.
And then, the location of this person, it was, it looks like they're going to be in all the different areas in the district, it looks like?
Are you referring just the transportation?
This particular one, right here.
We will, we will get that answer for you. Thank you.
And then, my next, I have some more, but I'll ask those later of you. And then, the next one was the Associate Superintendent. That was another one that I had some questions about, and that particular one, and I know we did have a brief conversation about that in our one-on-one, but my concern is, that's a hundred, the pay grade is U-22, so that's like $142,000 beginning salary on that one. And, for us, if we're really trying to, we're concerned about revenue, we just got some money back, which we thanked Mr. Scott for that. And now, this is a lot of money that's going out. I know we already have a Director of, a Director for the ACE. We already have one in place, we have an Executive Director of Adult and Career. So, we have all these people in place, and so that's why I was a little bit confused on why we actually need another Associate Superintendent. Because, if you listen to what the people in the communities have always spoke about, how we were always so top-heavy, and so I just want to make sure that we're having this conversation, because we're the ones who are, again, responsible for these job descriptions. And then, once we approve these, they would be put out, and possibly, what I've noticed lately, it's the minimum requirement, not the maximum requirement, and it's a five-day turnaround, and it's done. So, I just want to make sure that I'm bringing that to light. And, I was just told that, yes, that money is there in the budget, which I'm not sure where it's at. I would love to see that as well.
If I may, through the chair, first of all, Ms. Jordan, thank you very much for your questions, and I'd be happy to have a more extensive conversation with you offline. What I will share with you is when I sing tour, and as a campaign, and I will share with you that one of the very top priorities of this community is to ensure that we have more support, particularly around the trades. I'm sure you've heard that in the community as well. Our community is very loud and proud about the extreme need for children to come out of school and to be ready to enter those jobs. We have an extreme number of folks that have retired in those areas, and I know that multiple people approached me about having resources available to give to our district in those areas, particularly supporting the trades, internships, externships, other resources. If we were doing a great job in this area, with all due respect, we would have been meeting those needs. And I would not have encountered so many groups on the campaign trail that would have said, Dr. Carlin, you're the first person that's come to talk to us about this. So, we do have a need for leadership in this area, we have a need for resources in this area. I will share with you, that is my understanding, that the prior superintendent saved us about $3 million in a reorganization, and, yes, we are going to have to spend some money to be able to get the things that our children need. But, please rest assured that the next process that I have going on with our cabinet right now is to look line by line, through each budget line, and to discover those must-dos and those nice-to-do's. The nice-to-do's are going to be going by the wayside in this district, and we are going to put resources behind the things that this community cares about, and one of the things they care about are the future of our children, and I know we all do as well. We want our children well-prepared, and when we don't have enough resources behind this work, that's why I'm bringing this forward today. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Jordan?
And I thank you for your comments. However, I, and I know that I'm out there, and I'm sure when everybody else is out there, and we're speaking about the academies, and we're constantly talking about our high schools, how great they are, even our middle schools, how they're starting to get the kids ready for when they go to high school with our academies, because we have great academies. But, I think also, too, we have a great resource in our communication department, which we, they're obviously winning some awards this evening. And with that, we need to tell our stories better. We need to be out there making sure that we're able to disseminate that information and speak on what we have in our district. And then, so I don't know if we need another person to do that, or if all the principals of these schools and our communication department, that we already have invested in making sure that our kids are great, if we don't encourage them to be our spokespeople for our academies.
Yep. And so, if I may, just one additional piece of information, and I wholeheartedly agree, and you and I have had those conversations offline, I think actually all of our board members have talked about the importance of telling our story better. This position is not about telling our story better, this position is about getting out into the community, garnering resources, making contacts with business community members, and making sure that when the community has resources for our children, that we have somebody out there that's actively seeking those. Not to say, you know, we don't have great academies, we have wonderful career academies at our schools, wonderful. Not enough people know about those, and also, there are resources that are untapped. So, my anticipation for this job is for this person to be out in the community. Ninety percent of their job will be being out in the community, garnering resources from people that I personally encountered that want to give resources to us, we have not come to them. And so, that's this person's job. So, thank you for that comment.
Mr. Persens?
I'd like the superintendent to anticipate this person bringing in much more resources than the salary that we're paying them. And to me, that's definitely a win-win situation, you know. So, it's got, not, it's going to be cost-neutral, it's going to be cost-positive for us. So, I'm all for that. Also, would like to say that this is all sort of new to us, having an elected superintendent, but we have to give her room to organize the district as she sees fit, because we're going to throw her under the bus if it doesn't work. But, seriously, it is her job to do the operations, and we have to look at the job descriptions and things, but I think it's been explained pretty well. That's all.
Then we got to move on. So, Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, I just want to comment with, I have a lot of experience with my former business, thirty-five years in business. This is a key, this is a key position, which we talked about in our one-on-ones. I totally went over this job description, and I think it's the really, the key to making this happen with the business community. We have a big gap between the school district and the business community, and many, there's many folks out there who would hire and actually pay these students interns and give them a monthly salary for helping them build their business while they build their skills before they graduate. So, I totally support this function. I think, I don't even think you could put a price tag on the return you're going to get on this. So, I'm all for it.
Ms. Jordan, then Ms. Juvenelli, then we really got to move on.
I just wanted to make a real quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Persens. I understand that we have an elected superintendent, however, it is our job as board members, and I just want to make sure that I'm doing my job and asking the right questions to, because we are responsible for the budget, we are responsible for the job descriptions as board members. That is our constitutional duties to do that, and that's the only reason I bring up questions. Thank you.
Thank you. My question actually is regarding the transportation jobs. Who will the supervisor, stockroom of supervisory, supervisor report to, and who will the coordinator report to?
The supervisor will report to the Executive Director of Transportation.
Okay.
The coordinator will report also to the Executive Director.
Thank you. I do support these positions as well. I think that what we were doing has not been enough, and I think this will help with making that, especially the, what's the superintendent, the associate superintendent. I don't know that Dr. Carlin can be out there enough to garner the needs, and we have so many, Lee County has unique opportunity and business opportunities that are not the same in every other district, and therefore, I think the need is there, is needed for someone to garner these career technical positions that are needed in for, just in our, for our community, not for the state of Florida, just for our community. And I think that's what the focus will be on. So, I'm kind of excited to see what this person will do, and who that person will be, because I think that it's going to take a certain kind of person.
Yes.
And, a person that can really get out there and hit the ground running to achieve the needs and meet our needs for the community. That's really, I think, the end game, is to meet the needs, and we're not doing that as a district. So, I'm excited to see how that goes. Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on?
Okay. Thank you, Chief Martin.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, which will be elementary and secondary school emergency relief, also known as ESER. Madam Superintendent, if there's anything you want to add before we begin?
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about ESER funds today and provide you with some updates, and I'll turn it over to our team at this time, allow them to introduce themselves. I do have one piece of information that was just brought to me. Coordinator of Transportation will be at the South Compound. So, that was a question that was asked. Thank you.
Good afternoon, school boards, Superintendent Dr. Carlin and Attorney DePree Bruno. I am Lita Dietz Smith, joined by Matthew Acosta. We are both Assistant Directors. I work in the Grants Department, and Matt works for us over in the Budget Department. Our presentation today is focused on an overview of ESER, how these grant funds came about to our school district, some ways in which the funds were expended, the completion of the grant, and how ESER will impact our work moving forward. This timeline, while it may seem confusing, what's important to know is that we started receiving ESER funds in March of 2020, and the orange arrow shows you that we are all the way over in December. All of our ESER funds had to be incurred by September 30th, 2024, and then we are given a little bit of flexibility in order to liquidate funds and request reimbursement through the Florida Department of Education. So, to provide you a little bit of history on ESER, ESER stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. These are federal stimulus funds that were provided by the U.S. Department of Education through three acts to the Florida Department of Education. The Florida Department of Education then provided our districts with the stimulus money, given certain allocations to target specific initiatives. On this slide, you see the names of the different allocations that fell under each act totaling over $300 million. So, ESER is the largest, most popular portion of this funding, and on the next slide, you see it broken into three parts. This slide represents the specific initiatives that were funded with use of ESER funds, and it's important to remind you and the community that when we received ESER I, this was during unprecedented times where we had to work swiftly in order to ensure that online learning could continue and student engagement was still occurring even when students were at home. So, as we had the opportunity to move through ESER I, II, and III, we were able to make more informed decisions about the needs of our district and how to better allocate these funds to impact student achievement through our collaborative efforts. ESER I ended in September 2022, ESER II ended in September 2023, and ESER III just concluded in September 2024. I can happily report that since the creation of the slide deck, we can update the community that 100% of all of these funds have been expended, and every single dollar was utilized with zero dollars being sent back to the Florida Department of Education. All of these grants totaled, like I said, almost $300 million. So, while many of us are thankful to put ESER in the past and behind us, we would be remiss not to thank those hard-working individuals that may or may not be in this room today. ESER provided our district with the most significant amount of federal stimulus money that we have ever received, and it was no small feat to make decisions regarding the allocation of this funding. Every department and division in this district was represented through the process of expending these funds. Our Academic Services Department assisted in making decisions.
Our academic services department is holding a hot cocoa celebration.
Hot cocoa.
Can we, can we have that audio turned off, please?
Thank you, Darren. So, we're glad you joined in for some hot cocoa. Please send that to the Adrian and tell that our academic services department.
Sorry about that, please continue.
No, my apologies. Our Academic Services Department assisted in making decisions regarding curriculum and tutoring programs that directly impacted student achievement. Our HR Department assisted in the hiring, retention, and transition of ESER-funded employees. Our Business Services Department supported ESER through procurement processes related to federal grant guidelines, providing budgets to schools and departments that receive monitoring of spending and reimbursement to our local charter schools. Operations Department assisted in the initial distribution of PPE and assisted schools preparing for students to return face-to-face, as well as compliance efforts related to the Davis-Bacon Act. Our Business Intelligence Department assisted in monitoring and tracking student data, providing data used to calculate return on investment, and the assurance that all students had access to home internet. On this slide, you see a listing of our top ten expenditures that were spent with use of ESER funds. Again, these totaled over $300 million, with the largest expense being focused on stabilization pay. It is important to note that our charter schools also received a very large allocation of these funds, and they receive funding based on their proportionate share and students that attend their schools. After looking at our top ten expenditures, we would like to dive into some specific data related to the projects and impact. You've all been provided a data sheet, which I will briefly look at a couple of items with you, which is important to celebrate. Two-hundred-and-sixty of two-hundred-and-seventy-six employees that were funded through ESER have been transferred into district-funded positions. Last summer, we were able to provide funding for our summer series, which gave eight-hundred-and-eighty-three teacher participants the opportunity to attend over one-hundred-and-sixty professional development sessions over four days. Of those teachers that participated, eighty-nine percent of them agreed or strongly agreed that that provided them a meaningful opportunity to learn and grow as professionals. ESER was also able to provide two years, or an additional year to our new teachers, a second year of mentoring. Of those that received those mentoring, ninety-three percent of them were retained in the school district. Forty-eight of our schools in the district received Level One High Reliability School Certification, which was funded briefly look at a couple of items with you, which is important to celebrate. 260 of 276 employees that were funded through ESER have been transferred into district-funded positions. Last summer, we were able to provide funding for our summer series, which gave 883 teacher participants the opportunity to attend over 160 professional development sessions over four days. Of those teachers that participated, 89% of them agreed or strongly agreed that that provided them a meaningful opportunity to learn and grow as professionals. ESER was also able to provide two years, or an additional year to our new teachers, a second year of mentoring. Of those that received those mentoring, 93% of them were retained in the school district. Forty-eight of our schools in the district received Level One High Reliability School Certification, which was funded out of ESER. Twenty of those 48 schools improved by three or more percentage points on their school grades. Six schools in our school district were able to achieve Level Two High Reliability School Certification. Moving into curriculum, ESER was able to prepay for several online subscriptions for this school year in order to enhance student achievement. We were also able to purchase instructional materials for approximately $14 million. We are also going to continue to take a deeper dive into return on investment. Our Back on Track program, which was tutoring provided to our high school students, spent approximately $950,000 over two years, with 1,700 students participating and almost 1,300 credits recovered. It is important to note on the bottom of this data sheet that I wrote as of 9:30 that charter schools had expended all but $1 million. Again, it's important to note that all funds have been expended related to ESER and $0 were returned to the Florida Department of Education. Next, I would like to talk to you a little bit about Glimpse. Glimpse is a vendor that we have partnered with, which you will continue to hear more about, and their role is to calculate and provide specific data related to return on investment. So we started this project with the use of ESER funds because it was important for us to make well-informed decisions about moving forward even after these dollars were gone. So on this slide, you see a sampling of one of our supplemental education products used to support reading in the 23-24 school year for third to eighth graders. Of the 17,000 students who use this program with fidelity, according to the vendor, students showed an average growth of 5.82% on FAST from PM I to PM III. And while it looks like everyone, users, partial users and non-users grew, when you look a little bit more deeply, you see that those students who use the program to the recommended usage almost doubled the growth of non-users. This data, again, is one small sampling of the work that we're doing with Glimpse and provides key insights to make us, allow us to make decisions about our financial responsibility regarding the number of licenses we're purchasing, the impact our professional development is making on student achievement, and support for our educators to improve fidelity of our products. Again, because we were able to prepay for many of these subscriptions this school year, we will continue our study of return on investment and have, we will, we have continued to start looking into other programs with other federal grant money. So as mentioned, ESER was given to school districts during unprecedented times where we had to make decisions very quickly with large sums of money. While we did many things well, we also had great learning opportunities and helped us improve systems and processes moving forward related to not only grant dollars, but dollars as a whole. To begin, some of the improvements we are making is in the Human Resources Department, solidifying processes related to grant-funded positions, notification to those employees, and ensuring that those employees feel valued when they're working in those grant-funded positions. The Grants Department is developing specific criteria and procedures for departments that are requesting grant funds. These requests will be tied directly to the strategic plan. They will be vetted and approved based on specific criteria. We will also continue to seek and secure alternative funding through local partnerships and competitive grant opportunities. And future initiatives that are determined to be eligible for grant funding will be strategically planned with an evaluation of impact. Lastly, we continue to be committed to deepening our analysis of return on investment for vendor products and how it directly relates to student achievement. And because everyone wants to know, there's lots of auditing and reporting that goes alongside federal grant dollars. So we have been audited and provided several reports related to this money. We continue to ensure compliance of district, state, and federal processes. We ensure inventory management and tracking. To date, there have been no audit findings related to our ESER funds. Most of our reporting was completed at the end of the grant, which was September 2024. And we do have some flexibility to liquidate those funds and request reimbursement. We do anticipate additional auditing for these funds, and we're recently asked for documentation related to the Davis Bacon Act. So in conclusion, Matt and I will continue to work together to make sure that all the final reporting is given to the Florida Department of Education at grant end. We will continue our partnership with Glimpse to study the return on investment of the vendor products that we are purchasing with the district. And we will continue to seek alternative funding methods for initiatives that have proven to have a strong impact on student achievement. At this time, we welcome comments and questions.
Well, thank you very much to the team for your presentation. ESER is very complex. We saw that there are multiple tiers. Certainly, we are very appreciative of the support that we had financially relative to when the pandemic first commenced. I remember being in the superintendent's office and listening to the governor announce that we were going to be closing schools. And I went, oh, my goodness, what's this going to look like for our elementary students? And we're very fortunate in Florida to get back online, get children back in school as soon as possible. So that was really great. And ESER funds have helped us do that as well. So we look forward to the board's comments and questions.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, board member, comments and questions? Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. And I noticed there was a brief description of Glimpse in there. And I know for probably about a year and a half, I've been asking for a presentation on that because the application when we purchased this was to look at all the work that we're doing and to see, is it working or is it not working? And if it was not working, then we would discontinue that and use the funds elsewhere. We've yet to see that come before us. But I did, I appreciate the fact that you threw it in there for like a half a second. But that's something that I don't, we're not sure if it is working or, you know, we've paid for that program and, or the application. And how is that, how is that working for us and the programs to let us know if, in fact, they are worth paying for or not?
If I may, yes. So thank you. If this has been a wish of the board and we haven't fulfilled that, I just made a note on that. So we'll, we'll make sure that happens.
Anything else, Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments and questions? Okay. Thank you both for your presentation. We appreciate it. Moving on to item number five, which will be district investment returns Mike, Ms. Jensen, please.
Thank you. Couldn't tell if I was echoing myself. Good afternoon, Superintendent Carlin, board members and colleagues. I'm Danielle Jensen, Director of Financial Services. Today we have a presentation by Public Trust Advisors, who has been the district's financial advisor since 2015. They were founded in 2011. Public Trust Advisors specializes in managing and servicing the investment needs of local governments nationwide. Public Trust has more than $89 billion in assets under management as of September 30, 2024, and more than $12 billion in the state of Florida. The district's team is led by John Grady, the Managing Director and Partner of the Investment Advisory Services Division. John has more than 25 years of government investment management and public finance experience, servicing as an investment advisor for fixed income assets for numerous public entities across the United States. We are very proud to have them present our FY '24 fiscal, fiscal '24 investment report and provide a current economic update.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm joined here by my colleague Rod Bettini. And it's good to be, be here. Happy holidays. And we've got some interesting things going on in our economy, as you know. But one of the things that I'll highlight today is that these higher interest rates that we've experienced over the last couple of years have resulted in some considerable increases in your interest earnings. So when you're thinking of budgeting and so forth, there's been a huge benefit of that, of these higher rates versus what we saw just a couple of years ago. So.
I thought you did the economic update first.
Is it okay if we do that? Yeah, thank you.
Right, sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
My bad.
And as I present, the format of the presentation is just to spend a few minutes on the economic update and then follow up with a review of your overall investment program. But please, as I'm talking through my points, if you have thoughts, questions during my presentation, please jump in, or we can wait until the end. But generally, what we like to do is just highlight a few of those larger macroeconomic discussion points that you likely hear and read a lot about. And the first one, of course, is gross domestic product or the growth of our economy. And the most recent reading was, of course, was for the third quarter of 2024 into September 30. GDP growth was 2.8%. It's actually a pleasant surprise. Expectations for growth during the third quarter were much lower, and that follows a 3% growth in the second quarter. And if we look back over 2024, the good news is economic growth has actually been much better than what economists had projected at the beginning of this year. And interestingly, a very similar story happened in 2023. So you likely remember reading a lot about an upcoming recession, a strong likelihood of recession going back as far as 2023 and even into 2024. That doesn't mean that that's off the table completely. But the good news is, is as an economy, we've continued to grow. I would say that the consumer who makes up more than three quarters of the economy, of course, us as we go out and spend, we've been resilient, is probably the best word to use. Now, that said, we've taken on a lot of debt as consumers over this timeframe, as well as the federal government, as we all know. So debt continues to be something in the, in the background, so to speak, that, that does cause some concern for future growth. But that said, through the third quarter and likely into the fourth quarter of 2024, we'll hopefully see another quarter of positive growth in the economy. And again, most of that growth in recent quarters has been led by the consumers, which is very normal. The other bigger component of GDP, of course, is business investments. That was a little low or light in that third quarter. But in recent quarters, businesses have continued to invest in our economy as well. And when you see that, that generally suggests that businesses expect consumers to go out and buy their products and services, and so they invest heavily in that area. Another big topic, of course, is inflation, right? We know that. We read about that all the time. And if we rewind back to the summer of 2022, where inflation was up year over year over 9%, it was the highest inflation rate that we've experienced in four decades. The good news is inflation has come down rather dramatically over the last two years. So that's good news. That said, we still have inflation. Prices are still increasing. They're not decreasing because inflation's coming down. They're just increasing at a lesser amount. And so when we think about GDP growth on that prior slide and the ability of us as consumers to spend, inflation continues to be a very difficult discussion point. And a lot of that, in fact, if we look at CPI and the components of CPI over the last several months, and I would argue 18-plus months, shelter costs have been the biggest part of inflation. And if anyone can feel it, it's Florida and arguably Southwest Florida. This is one of the hottest areas for price, home price growth, as you know. And so that's been the challenge. So as the Fed, as we'll talk about with interest rates, as the Fed raised interest rates to try to slow down that inflation, they can't really impact house prices as much as they can really other components of the economy. So that's been a really big challenge of the Federal Reserve. But again, the good news is, is that we have seen that rate come down. The, the blue line is overall inflation, as you can see, at 2.6% in October. Overall inflation, which includes food and energy, at 3.3%. Really trying to get the, the Fed's hope is that that rate will trend closer to that 2% target that they've had. And so we will see as we move forward, I think, again, as, as shelter continues to be the dominant, that might be the challenge of getting that closer to that 2%. But good news is, we're in a much better spot than we were certainly in 2022 and 2023. And what drives our economy, of course, is consumers' spend. We need jobs. We need to be employed to, to spend. And that is the other side of this. So the Fed's two primary goals are stable monetary policy and full employment. And stable monetary policy, of course, governed by inflation and hopefully keeping that low. The other is, is helping the economy to have full employment. If we look at the chart on the top right, that's really just monthly job growth that you hear about each month when that's released on the first Friday of each month. It's a little skewed when we look at this chart, because this includes those, those months right after the pandemic had set in in 20, and then the recovery of those 22 million jobs into 2021. So you can see on that left-hand side of that chart, job growth on a monthly basis, somewhat volatile, but some months reaching 700, 800,000 jobs a month. That was more of a recovery time rather than normal job growth. I would argue that historically, job growth is generally considered, good job growth is anywhere from 150 to call it 250,000 jobs per month. And so that is likely what we'll start to see from the, as these sort of pandemic and COVID periods roll off of these charts. The last job report was 12,000. Obviously, that's not a great jobs report. The one month prior to that was 223,000, which was good. But we had three hurricanes. And so that likely had a huge impact on job growth in that October figure. So I think as we look at November and December, and then as we get through the holiday season in 2025, of course, we'll see how the economy is playing out from a jobs perspective. Most believe that the job sector is cooling down from what we've seen. If you recall back 12, 15 months ago, it was certainly much more in favor of the employee rather than employer. We work with all public entities, and I can tell you the number of conversations we've had with, with our clients. And that's been, and the public sector in particular, has been very challenging to fill jobs, especially in finance, accounting, and so forth, but arguably across the board. So the job market does seem to be cooling off. That said, unemployment still remains very low from a historical perspective. The job, the unemployment rate on the bottom chart, 4.1% through October. It's slightly higher than that 3.6% that we experienced a little over a year ago. But if we think about relativity, overall, full employment has generally been considered 5% or less. And so when we see unemployment going from 3.6 to 4.1, it was as high as 4.3. There was a bit of concern that inflation was, pardon me, that unemployment was moving up faster than anticipated or expected. But it sort of settled in just over 4%. And many believe that that's, again, a still strong unemployment rate, and that the job market is still moving along at a fairly decent pace. So as these next few slides, we'll just talk about interest rates for a few minutes, and then we'll tie that into your investment program. But just to summarize, this GDP growth, stronger than expected. Inflation, good news, is coming down. Job market seems to be cooling off. But with the exception of this last month, we've still seen some decent job growth on a month-to-month basis. Thank you, Danielle. Just quickly on this, this is, there's a lot of information. This is the Federal Open Market Committee's dot plot. The Fed meets every 12 weeks or so, and then every three, pardon me, every six weeks. And every quarter, they update their dot plot, which is essentially their expectation of where the overnight rate is anticipated to be. And just as a reminder, the FOMC or Federal Open Market Committee, they set that rate with each meeting based on a vote. That rate was as high as 5.5% through September. And that was the highest level. We had that rate for a little over a year. It was the highest rate since 2002. So over 20 years to reach that highest rate. Again, that will, as you'll see in a moment, ties into the very significant interest income that you experienced in 2023, which was a great thing. Now, as we look to where we are, they've reduced that rate now by 0.75% through two meetings. They're expected to potentially reduce that rate here next week by another quarter of a percent, which would bring that rate down to 4.5%. When we think about going from 5.5% to 4.5%, of course, that's going to have, it will have a negative impact on your interest earnings. But if we think about the overnight rate, even at 4.5%, to give us some perspective, between 2008 and 2015, that rate was 0 to 25 basis points. And then it was also 0 to 25 basis points between 2020 and 2022. So for the last, out of the last 16 years or so, nine years, that short-term or overnight rate has been close to zero. So experiencing that rate moving up to 5.5% has been very beneficial. And the hope is, and this is what you hear a lot about market economists talking about, is that instead of going into a recession, this soft landing, if that were to occur, or even a light recession, that hopefully the Fed wouldn't have to bring that rate down to zero or closer to that, as they've done through the housing crisis and credit crisis, and then in the pandemic more recently. So hopefully, the Fed has been able to manage this. We'll see how that plays out. By the way, just for some historical context, the last, over the last 50 years, when the Fed has gone into their tightening cycle or rate, increase the interest rates, there have been three times that the Fed was able to. avoid a recession. And all three times, that was, the main result of that was due to a decent job market or a strong job market. And so we're hopeful that this recent job market that we've had, even with the cooling off, can hopefully help us stave off a recession, at least for the near term. So that's a little bit of the overnight rate, but that's important because it does tie into your liquidity funds, which make up a majority of your overall investments. A lot of data on this chart. I'll just make one comment. If we look down that column on the left-hand side in those yellow numbers, those are projections of the overnight rate moves. And what the market is anticipating is potentially three quarters to maybe 1% rate cut between now and the end of calendar year '25. So that could potentially mean an overnight rate that would be between 3.5% to 3.75% if that were to take place. This is highly unreliable, but it does give us an idea of what the market's expecting at any particular time. This is actually from November 18th. If you looked at this chart this morning, it's very similar. So the expectations, again, of maybe one to three rate cuts here in the near term, and then seeing how the economy reacts to those lower interest rates. We'll skip, I'll skip number eight, since we've talked a bit about that. And just going to slides nine and 10, and looking at our yield curve, when we think about your investment program and public investment, public entity investment programs in general, very, very high quality, safety first. So when we're looking at a yield curve, we're showing you treasuries. And the reason for that is you're invested only in fixed income securities. This gives us a good idea of what those rates might be. And so we're showing two lines. The gray line is from April 15th, which is generally thought of as the most recent peak of this current interest rate cycle. And you can see overnight rates on the left-hand side at three months out to five years, so anywhere from 4.6% to above 5% in April. We've seen rates come down. We saw rates come down considerably through September, but we've actually seen rates move back up since September. So that's been a good thing for more recent investments. But the idea is that we want to illustrate today from this is that we're still seeing interest rates that are above 4%, and that's a good thing. We'll talk about your liquidity strategy, and then your longer-term strategy and the benefit. When it comes to investing public funds, the other thing I want to make sure to mention is that it's never to try to time the market. It is to make investment decisions based on your cash flow needs, your risk tolerances, and so forth, with a primary objective of safety of principle. But with that, we want to help design an investment program that protects you in a rising interest rate environment, as well as one that helps you to protect some of your investments when interest rates come down. And lastly, on the interest rates, just to highlight the amount of volatility we've seen really over the last almost two years, going back to January of 2023, we've seen rates move up and down as these, as the economic indicators have come out. And again, a lot of those results or responses to economic indicators were jobs reports and CPI, and that's why we wanted to talk about those a little bit with you. Whenever there's stronger-than-expected jobs report, stronger-than-expected CPI, we tend to see rates move up, as the markets believe that you need higher rates of return to offset those inflationary factors. And the reverse is true, and we see rates coming back down. That's an expectation that the economy is going to slow down. So really just showing you the level of volatility, really 100-basis-point moves in these interest rates from quarter to quarter. And again, to reiterate, the goal is not to try to capture rates at any particular time, but to be disciplined with your investment program, and to ensure you have safety first, and then have the liquidity to meet your short, medium, and long-term obligations. So that's, those are some talking points on the economy. I didn't want to rush through that. I want to be respectful of your time. But let me pause, and any thoughts or questions from the board that I might address from the economic side?
Board members, do you have any questions? Okay. Continue on, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. So just to spend a few moments on your investment program and how that ties out to the economy. You have a very diverse investment program. We work very closely with Dr. Desenmore, Ms. Jensen, Ms. Ingersoll, and that, we believe, is hugely important because in order for us to make investment recommendations to the district, to ensure you have liquidity you need, but also to be able to invest out and lock in some interest rates for some of your longer-term assets, that conversation, that dialogue is important to help us make those recommendations. And so as your investment advisor, in addition to providing advice, just to give you a little more perspective of our role in those strategy recommendations, it's providing some reporting for month, quarter, and fiscal year-end. We have a portfolio management team, of course, that supports this relationship, that makes those investment decisions, as Rod and I have these conversations and work with them. Anytime you're invested outside of a treasury note, it's our belief that you should have individuals that are reviewing those issues. So if you're buying an Amazon bond or a Toyota bond, just because it has a rating that's approved or a maturity that's approved, we believe it's important that those securities be reviewed by an independent credit research team. So we bring that to the table as well for the district, for those investments outside of treasuries. And then, of course, we have operations and accounting. And probably most important is compliance. So know that every transaction that's conducted on your behalf for the district, and even for those investments that we don't manage, we help provide advice on, we want to make sure that those investment strategies are compliant with both Florida State statute as well as your investment policy statement. So this first slide, just to give you a good summary, on the left-hand side, just shows you that pie chart of how you're allocated there. You can see all of these larger percentages are actually your liquidity funds. These are local government investment pools. They're AAA-rated, and you can think of those as a money market fund strategy, where you have daily access to those funds. You send a note in, request those funds, and they're sent back to your bank on a daily basis. The benefit of this strategy, the fact that you have over 90% in this particular investment program, has been the increase in rates, as I mentioned in '22, from 0 to 5.5%. And that has been a huge benefit. And in fact, for your fiscal year ended '24, those assets earned a little over $58 million in interest. Just to give us some perspective, in 2022, that amount would have been 2.9 million. And so that just gives you an idea of how much of an impact these interest rates have had. So hopefully, they don't come down too far. And if they can level off, that should still provide decent interest earnings. Well diversified, again, within these multiple pools, again, AAA-rated. But that's the reason why you see a majority of your investment income from that, from the, your liquidity investment program as well. And then the balance of around 8% or so is in the longer-term portfolios, which we'll talk about here in a moment. One more slide on your liquidity portfolio, as they make up a majority of your assets. You can see on the left-hand side, where we're just showing you the balances. And then in addition to the balance, you see those percentages. Those are the yields on each of these local government investment pools, the two smaller ones and much lower rates. You can see Truist and Money Market Fund. Those are, by design, just generally provide a much smaller yield to maturity in any interest rate environment. You can see, you don't keep very many assets in there. Those are generally assets moved to those two components when you're getting ready to spend those. And then the others are maintained in SBA, Florida Class, Florida Fit, and Florida Palm. And the average of those pool programs, by the way, for the last fiscal year was close to 5%, 4.89%. The last two slides that we'll cover discuss a one-to-three-year portfolio strategy and a one-to-five-year portfolio strategy. So these are the two investment portfolios that Public Trust is your investment manager that we manage on your behalf. We, again, provide advice on the entire program. The idea of the one-to-three and the one-to-five, again, is to help diversify your investment program, as well as protect you through a declining interest rate environment. So where your liquidity funds have benefited from a rising interest rate, when rates start to come down, those liquidity funds actually reset on a daily basis. So if we see rates come down rather quickly, those liquidity funds will feel that impact literally on a daily basis. Whereas your one-to-three and one-to-five portfolios have an average maturity of 1.8 years and 2.5 years respectively. And the idea is, as we invest a small portion of your portfolio out, anywhere from one to three and one to five years, you're locking in those current interest rates and providing some protection. So if rates come down, you're still going to earn those four, four-and-a-half, 5% yields for, you know, anywhere from one to five years, depending on the time to maturity for those investments. These two portfolios are equally balanced between, again, each of these portfolios, and then the majority of the assets, again, in the liquidity program. So you can see, if we look at the asset allocation on the top right, you can see a majority of these funds in both of these programs are in U.S. Treasuries. That's by design. A small allocation to government-sponsored enterprises, those are simply Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Home Loan Bank. So they're not full faith and credit of the U.S. government, but they are government agencies, and they generally trade right around the same yield as treasuries. And so as the markets have changed, we've generally favored treasuries over those GSEs, but there is a small allocation. And then a small allocation to municipal bonds. And then, as I mentioned, corporate notes as an example as well. You're invested in eight or better corporate bonds. Again, each issue in your portfolio and all of our Public Trust managed portfolios are reviewed prior to being approved and authorized for portfolio management to buy those securities. So we have pre-trade compliance means, which means that before the portfolio manager can buy a security, it has to meet your investment policy parameters. That's then verified post-trade. And then we provide compliance of those transactions in your holdings on a monthly basis as well. And then finally, working with the district, providing information for your year-end financial report to show GASB-related requirements. We provide those as well, just to verify that, again, everything is compliant with your investment program. Lastly, one-to-five, so similar to the one-to-three year investment program, similar in holdings, similar in asset allocation. The primary difference, of course, being the maturity. So this portfolio is designed to have securities that mature between one and five years. So this duration or average maturity is slightly longer than the one-to-three. The idea that it will protect from a downturn in rates for a little bit longer than a one-to-five, pardon me, than a one-to-three. The other good news about the current rate scenario that we've seen, even though we've seen that volatility we've shown on the chart, the fact that rates have actually stayed higher than I think many would have expected, certainly 18 months ago, and stayed within that 3.5% to almost 5% range, that's allowed us to continue to reinvest as we have maturities within these portfolios at these higher levels, and protect by locking in some of those higher yields than we saw just a few years ago. Notice a lot of information. Let me, let me just summarize some of those. It's important for us to work closely with the team here at the district, ensure that you have the program that meets your liquidity needs, and it's vested in very high-quality securities, that it's diversified, and as I mentioned, but it's important to summarize it, compliant with your policy statement that we review annually with your team, as well as with state statute, and that's state statute 218415 that governs public funds entities. So with that, let me pause and ask the board, superintendent, if you have any questions on your investment program overall, or our role with you all?
Yeah, I just, again, just thank you to Mr. Grady and Ms. Jensen for providing us with this important update about our investments. As we talk about being fiscally responsible, this fits right in line with that priority. And so turn it over to Chair Fisher and our team.
Thank you. Board members, comments, questions? I see Mr. Ribble with his hand.
Yeah, I want to thank you for an excellent presentation. I was overwhelmed with the $58.2 million return on that portfolio. That, that number really jumps out at you. So congratulations. Well done.
Thank you, and congratulations to the district. It's exciting. It's tougher to be in this role when it's $3 million a year, and we can't take credit for all of it. But we, what we do enjoy is the relationship we have to help put this program in place to help you to hopefully enhance those earnings. Thank you, Mr. Ribble.
Any other board member comments or questions? Mr. Persson?
Just trying to figure out, I mean, I, like all of us, are a little worried about the interest rates coming down. Do we have the right allocation, in your opinion, as far as between the one and three and one and five? Or should we have even a little bit more in there?
That's a great question. We are actually having that dialogue with your team as we speak. So you're, you're heavier in those liquidity funds. A lot of that has to do, though, with capital project expenditures and those cash flow needs. But in our recent dialogue, there may be an opportunity. We like the, we like and recommend a balance between the one-to-three and one-to-five. So what is the appropriate amount in those? There may be an opportunity to move some of those assets into the one-to-three and one-to-five and protect a little bit more. But what we're doing right now is just making sure that we have your liquidity needs met first. That is, of course, the primary goal, and then looking to maybe allocate. So to answer your question, I think there is an opportunity. We just want to make sure your cash flow needs are met first.
Well, I'd tell you what to do, except that would be a big mistake. But yeah, thank you for looking into that.
Thank you, Mr. Persson.
Thank you, Mr. Persson. Anyone else? Mr. Grady, thank you for the enlightening presentation. I'll actually bring it up to the board real quick. I was going to bring it up later on, probably the perfect time. One of our portfolio investments is Florida Palm. And just so you're all aware, I was appointed to the Board of Trustees to that recently. So if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. So thank you, Mr. Grady. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. I appreciate you both.
Congratulations on that appointment, Mr. Fisher, or Chair Fisher. That'd give you some great experience on liquidity for public funds. Thank you for the partnership with the district. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and great to be here today.
Appreciate it. Moving on to item number six, which will be insulin litigation presentation with our attorneys.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and Madam Superintendent. As legal counsel, I recommend that the school board participate in a multi-district litigation and retain Ferraro Law Firm to pursue claims for damages associated with an overpayment of insulin products under the school district's self-funded health insurance plan due to price fixing between pharmaceutical manufacturers and pharmacy benefits managers. Joining us today is attorney Natalia Salas, who is a partner at the Ferraro Law Firm. Attorney Salas focuses her practice on commercial business disputes, class actions, and multi-district litigation. Attorney James Ferraro was planning on joining us but was called away and thus unable to attend. Benny Brophy, our legal services coordinator, will assist Ms. Salas in her presentation. It is important for the board and superintendent to note that attorney Salas was appointed to the plaintiff's executive committee of the Insulin Pricing Litigation, MDL number 3080, before the Honorable Brian Martinotti, seated in New Jersey. Retainer agreement is on the agenda for your consideration this evening, and at this point, I will hand it over to attorney Salas to explain the litigation in detail.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I'm happy to be here. And most importantly, I'm happy to help the district recover funds that it has overpaid for insulin products over the course of the last 20 or so years. You know, I've been hearing the meeting, and I understand, as a parent, to two children who are in the school system down in Miami-Dade County, how important it is to have, to have money in the door that goes back to servicing these students. And so here, this case is really about overpayments by self-funded payers. So as you may know, I'm sure you likely know, the district, as, you know, the ninth largest in Florida, has significant room to recover funds in this case, because it provides health insurance for all of those employees, as well as for members of their family. And what this case is about really is, is the difference between what, in our view, should have been paid for insulin and these products, and what was actually paid. And so I'll start with that. I'm going to, I'm going to go through kind of a little bit of background about myself, my firm, the case. But I will say, just at the outset, that this is, this is an opportunity to join in the litigation that could potentially bring in significant dollars to the district. We have causes of action that allow for what we call treble damages. That means three times the amount of the damages. And we've pulled data initially before presenting. So we do know that there, the check marks of being a self-funded payer, of contracting with one of the relevant pharmacy benefit managers that are at issue, in this case, CVS Caremark, has, that check mark has, has been met. And we, we have seen the spend on insulin and the analog products, and it is significant here. So I just, I would like to start with that. Just as far as background, I'm a partner at the Ferraro Law Firm. It's a Florida-based firm. We're about to celebrate our 40th year. And we are a contingency firm, meaning that we, we do all the work and front all the costs, and we are not paid a dollar, and no one here is paying us a dollar unless there is a victory. What we have been negotiating, and what we've done with other districts and other government entities in this case, is a 25% contingency fee. We are, we are fully committed to this case. We, as, as was mentioned earlier, I am on the executive committee, meaning that I'm on the leadership of the case. So these are cases that are filed all over the country. They're then consolidated and sent over because there's common issues of fact and law to one judge, and that judge is sitting in New Jersey. So it's important, kind of at the outset, to say that, you know, hiring someone who's on the inside of the leadership is really important, because you're going to have, as the client, an inside track and knowledge that others may or may not have. Because this is not a class action. There's, there was a consumer class, so others, consumers of insulin products have brought a class action case. In our case, as self-funded payers representing self- In our case, as self-funded payers, representing self-funded payers, government entities who provide health insurance, private companies, unions, we are not a class action. We don't believe it's appropriate for class treatment, which really is beneficial to the district as a client. Why? Because each case is going to be treated separately. So we're going to have bellwethers, which is a fancy way of saying there's a few that are selected to go first. We've already started in that process. We're now in the discovery phase of the case. And I will jump ahead just to kind of give you some background, and I really, I think what the best way to, this slide, I really think, kind of speaks volumes because we're talking about inflation, and this is not about inflation. It's not an inflationary tale. This is really about a lack of transparency and frankly greed. I have seen the documents firsthand, and there has been absolutely a lack of transparency between the payers of these products and the middlemen, which are the pharmacy benefit managers, who then negotiate with the manufacturers. We see shadow pricing where they're increasing the prices in lockstep, and it just defies logic because this is a product that's been around for 100 years, and it makes no sense that it is now increased by 1,000% over the past 20 years. Now, this has all been revealed recently by a bipartisan Senate Finance Committee report that was released in 2021, and most recently by the FTC, which not only released a scathing staff report, but then decided to bring a lawsuit as well. So I am confident that there's a case here, and I'm confident that we can be the ones to represent the district in bringing that case. Time is really of the essence here because, as I mentioned, that staff report was released in January of 2021. There's a risk that the judge will rule that that's the period in which people should have known that they could have been damaged, and the statute of limitations for certain claims potentially could run as soon as January of 2025 for certain claims. So we are, the reason why my partner, James Ferraro, is not here is because he is presenting to Boca. I'm next presenting to Highlands County, where I presented to Port St. Lucie yesterday, Broward on Friday. So it is a kind of a mad rush, right, to get all these cases on file. We do have, I've been intimately involved in the process of drafting the complaints. They're voluminous, but we have the groundwork now to gather the data, which we've already started to do, and get them on file to avoid any risk on the statute of limitations issue. I'm going to jump through. Here's just, I think it's really interesting and helpful. Here are the links relating to the different insulin investigations, the shadow pricing scheme, and the status of the MDL. I do want to touch on kind of who's involved in this case so far. So here we have approximately 50 government entities that have filed thus far in the MDL, including 14 states. This is a bipartisan issue. In fact, the majority of the states that have filed thus far are what you would consider typically conservative states, which it's a little bit unusual, but in this case, it's really of public interest to people to become involved. As far as the Florida school boards, you have Broward County and Miami-Dade that have voted to retain counsel so far, and we are personally presenting to Highlands County and to Palm Beach County as well. The landscape of who has filed thus far in Florida is not fully transparent yet because some people have retained counsel but not yet filed in the MDL. I want to say about 15 or so Florida government entities have now voted to retain counsel, but I think that there's going to be a huge wave, just seeing what I'm doing between now and next week, about 10 presentations. I think you're going to see a big wave on that front. And this, I think, is what is going to be kind of the most important thing I would think to the board, which is what are we potentially going to get here, right? So we have an expert who has appined and given us a very conservative damages model. It's an antitrust model. And so like, as I mentioned before, it's the dividend between what the product should have cost and what we paid for the product, and that model, on average, is about $5,000 per user per year, which is significant if you think about it. So I think I mentioned, Lee County may have approximately 12,000 employees, and this is not even including their additional beneficiaries. So if you take that number, approximately 10% of those individuals, just based on the averages that we see in the country, may be diabetic. So that's the national average. So if you're just looking at that number in one year, you're looking at $600,000 in one year, and this is dating back to 2001. So the judge has already ruled that we can gather documents from 2001 to date. I think in our case, you know, in some cases, you can't get documents that far back, but it is a significant amount of time to recover. And as I mentioned, we have RICO claims and other claims that are outside of the contract involving conduct that should be penalized, so we call punitive damages. So there is a larger window for recovery than in other types of cases. And I know that this is a lot of information to share. I do, I mean, I'm here mostly just to answer questions. I feel very strongly about the case, and so I'm here to help and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Salas. Attorney Bree Bruno, is there anything you want to add before I go to board questions?
At this time, we would love to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Board member comments, questions? Mr. Persson, followed by Ms. Langford Fleming.
Yeah, you sold me on the one graph that showed it going up 1,000% versus inflation. Yeah, I'm all for this, being self-funded healthcare. I mean, that would really greatly help that slide, so that's all. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
My question is, if you go back to that, while we're on it, Slide 15, and it talks about the comparison between 4,000 and 1,000, that's significant. What role is Ozempic playing in this when it comes to so many consumers using that for weight loss rather than what it was intended for? Is that playing a role at all into increase of price?
So it's not playing a role as far as the increase of price because when you look at the timeframe for when it starts, for when it increased, it actually predates the use of Ozempic for this off-label usage that you're referring to. But Ozempic actually does play a role in increasing the potential for damages in this case because we're not only looking at insulin, we're looking at all the analogs of insulin, and Ozempic is there. And there's been no ruling that says whether, if you're not diabetic, we can't recover for it because the price is the price. So it actually is helpful because it could actually increase the potential recovery.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jordan?
I am definitely for this. I am a diabetic, so I get it, and I've seen that over the years, so thank you.
I know. I've heard from a lot of people that, you know, it's really, it's become a huge issue recently, and, you know, people are having to travel to other countries to get insulin products. So I feel very passionately about this case, so I'm happy to help.
Is that it, Ms. Jordan? Yes. Anyone else? I have some questions. Does anyone else have anything before I go?
Thank you, Attorney Salas. I ask this any time that we have any case before us. What is our legal exposure in any way if we sign up with this?
So, you know, it's a good question because sometimes there is fee shifting, right? You can be on the hook for attorney's fees in some causes of action. So in Florida, under the RICO statute, there is a fee shifting exposure. What we have, I believe that that risk is very low, but what we have done with other government entities that do have a concern over that risk is what we did in opioids, which is that we have paid for and sought out insurance to cover the fee shifting. So there is an insurance product out there that we've already done for at least one other government client that we can obtain where we pay a premium to cover the risk of any sort of fee shifting, should that be an issue. Otherwise, the risk is nonexistent really because it's a win-win. But I do want to say in full disclosure that that is a very small risk, but it is a risk, and we're happy to look into the, we've already been in contact with one insurance company, so we've placed it in the past, and we can do it again.
Agree. I'd be comfortable with that risk. Last question, just briefly, because I know this could go very long. Can you give an idea to us of kind of the timeline on this? I mean, just looking at this, obviously, discovery is going to be quite a lot, so.
So we've been at this about a year, and now we're past motions to dismiss, so the pleadings, like their initial pleading stages, the judge has yet to rule on that. I believe that discovery is going to take at least another year. I would say from beginning to end, five years would be my estimate. These cases tend to settle after the bellwether stage. We've been involved in PFAS, the water contamination cases, and that's what we've seen in that case, that we got a large settlement after about three years of being involved. So I would say an average is five years.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everyone else understood that. I appreciate that. Anything else before we move on from anyone? Okay. Thank you so much, Attorney Salas. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, next on the agenda will be topic number seven, Board Advisory Committee Discussion with our Deputy Superintendent Ken Savage.
Welcome back to the dais, Dr. Savage.
Thank you, Chairman, the board members, and our superintendent, Dr. Carlin. And a pleasure to be here among you again today. So this really is an opportunity for the board to have some additional discussion. It's a planned discussion that the board agreed to some time ago, prior to our elections, where we welcomed our new governance team, and this opportunity was for the board to have some discussion around your board advisory committees. So obviously, the board advisory committees are those where there's a policy that governs your board advisories, and specifically, the decision was made by the prior board, prior to the election, to suspend current board committees so that the board could have a planned discussion about at what point to resume and at what point, if you'd want to make any revisions to your current policy, and that we were here to be able to have some discussion. As that said, always, we also gather on the staff side. We work with our staff members to understand the staff vantage point as well, and so opportunity I've had to discuss some of this with the superintendent as well. So we're here today to be able to have some board discussion, but it's important to remind you that these are your board advisories. So ultimately, at the end of the day, it is your discretion because you, as board members, you rely upon advisement for those bodies, and so I think it is important that you know the final decision, of course, rests with the board. We are here to serve. Certainly, I serve as superintendent, but the superintendent is still the secretary of the board, and so we have certain recommendations that we're willing to share today to at least get the conversation started. And so with, Chairman, with that respect, I'd love to offer up some of that and some context, and then begin if that works for you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the way, one of the things Dr. Carlin mentioned when we first joined was a real commitment to trying to emulate, we want to be the best in our state, and really, one of the best in the country. In order to do that, you have to be willing to study, what do the highest-performing systems, what does the top-level governance do in those high-performing systems that are focused on student achievement and the highest organizational outcomes? What do they do? And so that's really where we come at this from, is not necessarily historical precedent but a focus on results because we all want to achieve great things for our students. And so that said, the prior board had some contemplation, even our prior superintendent, prior to my interim service, about what do other boards do? And so one of the things that we uncovered when we did an analysis across the entire state for these many months, one thing that we found was that our board in Lee County, for a long period of time, met six times a month, which actually was the highest amount of meetings in the state of Florida. Obviously, this board chose to amend that and decide, as you adopted your board schedule, decided to go to a number of board meetings that is consistent with some of the more higher-performing districts in our state. Because not only was the six meetings a month one of the highest, it was the highest in our state, but it's among the highest in the entire country. And so the amount of meetings, of course, is not directly correlated to student achievement, to high outcomes for students. The other key factor, back when Dr. Bernier was here as well, that we studied in the board, the prior board was briefed on this information as well, was we studied about the different board advisories, and so much of this information was shared with the prior board. And what we found when we analyzed across our state was that among the districts in our state, there were only two districts in Florida that had the same or more amount of board advisory committees, and those were Broward and Miami-Dade. And those were the only two districts that had an amount that exceeded our amount of board advisories. And of course, you know, those districts are significantly larger than us on the level of diversity and so forth. And so one of the contemplations we had is how do we ensure that the district and the board is getting diverse levels of information and broad input from a vast array of stakeholders that is truly data-driven and not necessarily indicative of a small sampling of voices that are not in any way being derived from any type of larger sampling methodology that would ensure that what you're hearing is truly a diverse constituency, but in some cases is predicated based on just those who choose to apply, to be considered for those different roles. And so that was something that we contemplated, all that information that had been collected. The second thing we contemplated was really, from a staff standpoint, the investment of time and energy that it takes to prepare for every single one of those board advisories, the amount of effort it takes on the staff side of it, and then we tried to assess what were some of the outcomes of those committees that added value from a staff standpoint. Truly, it's up to the board to contemplate the value that it created for you as board members. Only you would know that. But from a staff standpoint, we really tried to contemplate the amount of energy it took in delivering, in some cases, redundant presentations to multiple committees, each with different focuses, many of which had trouble making quorum due to membership concerns, some of which had all sorts of different potential issues and so forth. And so as we moved forward to recommendation, we again went back to the data of what do some of the high-performing districts do and what's the right balance of quantity and impact and so forth. And so we came to a conclusion that the DAC committee, which, as you know, is a district advisory committee, which is very diverse and has a very unique structure, afforded because it is comprised of our SAC committees, each member of the DAC is a member of a SAC, and those SACs by statute are diverse. They represent a broad swath within our community, and there are statutory guidelines on those SACs and how they are comprised, both ethnic diversity based on the makeup as well as positional diversity. You have teachers, you have support staff, you have parents, you have business community. You have a number of folks who are already invested and linked to one of our schools. They have the opportunity to then support that school-based team with some of their critical decisions they have to make, but they also have the vantage point of being able to serve in a district capacity, and hence the DAC. And the DAC allows for that broad group covering our entire region, so there's lots of different interests represented from the far reaches of our community and in that piece. So the DAC represents one opportunity, and DAC also has a scope of significant variance in what they can speak to. They can speak to really any matter that comes before the district, and they also have the precedent of being able to have formed subcommittees or ad hoc committees. So because of the membership of DAC and its inherent connection to SAC, it affords us an opportunity that if we had specific one-off concerns that needed in-depth periods of review, we have the ability within the DAC to create some of those types of subcommittee types of reports and allow those current organizational needs to be fulfilled. So that's DAC in a nutshell, that we have that. And I think there's a lot of opportunity within the DAC structure to address some of what we currently address through other board advisories. Secondary to that, we have, by policy, an audit committee. This was something, as we analyzed other districts, that had a board auditor, and as you all, as a board, are intending to hire a board auditor as well, the audit committee can provide an excellent opportunity to have an independent group. Again, as we researched audit committees in other districts, what we found was there were significant credentialing that was expected of the membership of that committee, so that the people who serve in that capacity truly should be highly qualified to add significant value so they provide an expertise, whether in operational audits, whether in financial audits, so that there's an opportunity for them to really dig into anything that would be naturally audited, and it would include... be naturally audited, and it would include any of those things, especially sensitive materials, as well as just anything that would be of a business interest to the district. So that audit committee has that function that is broad enough within the current policy and is found consistently in other districts that have that board auditor function. Often, there is either a charter or an audit committee as well. That audit committee could look into things such as finances, it could look into things, depending on financial audits that come through, it could look at all the things that currently would be identified through an auditor, a board auditor, so that you'd have that additional set of eyes to support and provide expert consultation. So between those two specific groups, the thought for us is that that would be a recommendation that we know we could support, we know there's clear precedent around the state, that those are pretty well-established, that we find audit committees, as well as district advisories that do have some of the broad functions that I've outlined today. And then many of the current committees that we have that have specific focuses, whether it's curricular, whether it's specific to strategic plan, whether it's specific even to equity diversity related in our EDAC and some of the site selection, many of those things we could put within a larger structure, and that would still allow you to have advisement as needed, but it would still put it within that larger DAC structure. So that was really something I wanted to share with you as we analyzed. Again, all of this ultimately is the board, it's just a humble recommendation as we assess those pieces, but I stand ready for any questions you may have about those recommendations or to just help participate in any additional conversation that you as a board would like to have on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Is there anything you wanted to add in, Dr. President?
Just to piggyback on what Dr. Savage spoke about, you know, one of the theories that I had as a school leader and a district leader was always looking closely at what we're doing every day and making sure that we're adding value. And I seem to subscribe to the position of doing less better, making sure that what we're doing is not just throwing a smattering of activities across the board and making sure that we are actually very intentional with our work. These lifts that I've been talking about, that we've been talking about as a board, you know, wanting to be the best in the state and best in the nation, requires strategic thinking. It requires taking a look at the wide landscape of work that we have ahead of us, with the resources that we have, the team members we have, and deciding what it is we can do. I had that conversation at school levels. As a teacher, I felt it, there were a lot of things we gave teachers to do, and I would say administratively, let's step back for a moment and let's see, what is it that we're doing that's bringing value, to Mrs. Jordan's point before about return on investment? And then what are we doing that is actually making a difference? And so I just encourage you to use that lens today. Sometimes when you walk away from something, it actually helps you do something better. So I just want us to use that lens as we have our conversation, or at least encourage that today. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. And just to give some of our new board members a little bit of insight on this, well, actually, both of you came from committees, I know, fairly recently, but, you know, one of the issues that seems to permeate is also finding people to sign up. I mean, that's been very difficult, this board, the prior board for the last two years, that was very difficult as well. There were some operational issues with actual committees themselves that I've, you know, I know I had to deal with with Dr. Savage and Attorney Bree Bruno as well. So there's a whole bunch of considerations as we go through and talk about this. So why don't we go through and have some comments and discussions? And I will start with Mr. Persons, and it looks like Mr. Ribble will be next.
I didn't hear mention of ISOC. I think we have to have that.
If I may, that's a great question. So ISOC, so there's a number of things I omitted, right? So what I'm referring to are only the technical board advisory. So ISOC was, is technically, certainly would maintain, and that's part of the reference, but that is not a board advisory, that is an independent committee. So that is often, folks often refer to that as a board advisory, and certainly, they help our district, they're instrumental to our success and to our entire community, but they are not a board advisory. This also includes things such as student advisory. That is not included in any of that discussion, that is not technically a board advisory. We would not be, these would only be actual board advisories, which in this particular case would include your construction advisory, curriculum advisory, district advisory, which you mentioned is the DAC, equity diversity advisory, finance advisory, then strategic plan and accountability. And so they're often used interchangeably, but the ISOC is actually not, does not fall into that category. Certainly, that would be included and would still exist as it is required to do. But thank you for that distinction, sir.
All right. Thank you, I answered my question.
Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, because I was on the committee for six years, and attendance, you're right, attendance is a major problem. And then about three years in, we decided we're going to try the Zoom fiasco, and I'll call it a fiasco because it was an absolute disaster. We had people that saw they didn't have to come up, so they'd be on Zoom. The kids would be crying in the background, the dog would be barking, you'd be going to do a vote or a motion, and you'd have to ask the person three or four times that wasn't paying attention, and, oh, what are we voting on? Are we required to do Zoom if we have, if we do run with these committees?
We, I mean, there's obviously, our policy has been revised several times. We actually have empowered the committees to make a decision based on their individual piece. It's one of the first things they get to do when they have that meeting, is what's the format? So some have required a face-to-face only, some have done completely virtual, depending on those individual committees.
Well, my vote would be not allow the Zoom, because that, to me, it never worked out, and I watched the other committees as well. None of them run harmoniously when they have people on Zoom. That's just my very strong personal opinion. Thank you.
I'll jump in if nobody's going to jump in. And we more want to focus, I guess, on the structure, what those committees are going to be, or we can continue with some of those committees. I mean, for me, as I said, one thing we should all recognize and realize is we're not in any way inhibiting any kind of community contact, any kind of community outreach. I mean, that is also incumbent on us as elected officials to go out there and solicit that. And I know our DAC committees have been very successful with that. At least, my kind of thought on this would be kind of follow more of the model of moving some stuff under DAC or utilizing that better, I think. At least for me, as an individual board member, that would be my standpoint. There's a lot of, you know, even in the two years that I've been on, there's been a lot of difficulties, and the participation has been extremely tough, especially trying to recruit people. And some of those committees went off track a bit, to be honest, so they got outside of what the scope of what they were, and that was a bit of a difficulty, so. Ms. Langford Fleming?
I just wanted to jump in and just state for the record, I completely agree with the direction of the thought process with this. I think DAC is a great umbrella to serve all of those committees that you listed that would fall underneath that. I've served on several of these as well, and attendance is a huge issue. But even more important than that is giving back time to staff to do what's really important. And when we're asking our staff to be here until all hours the night after they've been here, way before they were probably supposed to be anyway, I just think that's a huge benefit for staff mainly. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
For the last six years that I've been here, we have, I think the, we have been trying to figure out what this committee, what the committees are supposed to do. So in the beginning, you know, it was, the committees were supposed to be here for us, the board was supposed to have conversations, what is it that we would like for our committees to work on? Because they're our advisory boards. But it never happened. What has always happened is, the very first meeting, there's a chair, there's a vote for a chair, vice chair, and then the committees decide what they wanted to discuss. But that may not be what we're working on. So that was kind of an issue at some point in time. And I know audit committee, that's not part of 9140 either, so they're not part of the committees, I just wanted to clarify that as well. So when you were speaking, all the other ones. And yes, sometimes it is hard. I know finance, I was on that several times, it was very hard to get people to commit to that, to be there. People have, because it is volunteer, people do have obligations. And I know, you know, personally, I've gone out to my district to invite people to come and to be part of it. But I think we never, we kind of failed too, as a board, trying to figure out what is it that we would like these committees to help us and give them, you know, give us the, you know, tools, you know, for them to do. Like right now, DAC is working on school start times. We put that out there to them, to talk about that, to, you know, have conversations, to bring that back to us. And that's a good thing, because now they have a mission, they know that they're working for, you know, something that we really are, you know, would like to have some input on. And I think that this is what this is about, it's about input, you know, to us, but we still have to give them a purpose or a why, why do they exist, and what do we need them to do? I just wanted to put that out there.
Ms. Wood, followed by Mr. Persons.
Also, I think that the committees were supposed to be kind of like telling our story, our cheerleaders. But I don't really, I can't really say that that has happened completely. Part of it became agendas bringing back to us their agendas, different agendas. That's really probably what I see that the committees wound up doing. Yet it wasn't a board's committee at that point, it became the community. But we, how do we, how do we have that conversation with our community to hear what they're saying? We have to have that, you know, what avenue are we going to take to have that communication? Because some of these, so like DAC, that's really more parents and, okay, and more parents and not necessarily the community. And we still have to hear our community regardless. So I don't want to send that message that we're trying to close, you know, stop the community from coming, being able to come, besides, you know, our meeting, because three minutes is not enough for someone to tell us how they feel sometimes. And then, and we need to hear that, we need to have that opportunity, we don't want to close that door. We have all these other things that we have on the list, I had to get the list, because yes, we have advisory committees, but there's other liaisons that the board belongs to that the new board members are not, so far are not, you know, invited to that. So we do need to talk about what happens with those and switch it, just, for example, just the calendar one. I've never been, in my eight years, I've never been on the calendar committee. And I feel like actually, Jada, you're the first time being on the calendar committee that you, that the board had an input. Like, we really never had an input, the calendar committee kind of did their own thing, and, I mean, you got the Veterans Day on there that wasn't ever on there, I don't think, or not for a very long time. So, you know, I think that's an example of what we need to be doing, and the committees that we need to be doing. And so I know you wanted to answer my question, I don't know which one it was, but go.
So those were just great points, Ms. Juvenelli. So first one, just wanted to address, because it will go backwards in order, was this did no way preclude some of those other pieces. So when you mentioned there are, in some cases, board liaisons, or liaisons for our school, where it's institutional, or in other ways, there may be district advisory committees, but they also have a board seat, so a board member can hear it and participate. In no way are we taking any of that away. This really strictly has to do with the committees that are then subject to sunshine that exist for the sole purpose of providing you as a board advisor. So I wanted to really utilize that distinction, because it really does go back to the first question you had, which has to do with, how do we get meaningful input from the broader community? And so one thing I just, I failed to really kind of give voice to, we now have the ability with different types of technologies that we have, to get thousands of voices in some cases, of whichever particular group we want to do. And the power of getting thousands of voices is that maybe three or four voices may show up to speak at a podium. And sometimes, they will say, I am speaking on behalf of the whole community. But there may not be data to substantiate that, in fact, that voice really does, in fact, carry the weight of the community. So using more statistically significant sampling methodologies, utilizing more advanced surveys, as well as for us, you know, example, that was thought exchange and other tools, we now have the ability to aggregate large-level responses and utilize artificial intelligence to theme analyze qualitative responses, so people don't just answer a simple question, they tell you why in their own words, and they can be aggregated, so we preserve all those thousands of different answers that people speak from their own personal experience, but you're able to see and analyze themes, that then tell this board more accurately, how does a larger swath of very, it's both quantitative and qualitative data? And so certainly, we don't want to discourage people from exercising their own individual rights. We're grateful for folks who take the time to inform of the issues, to help us send emails to our board members, but you are the ones that are duly elected, you're the ones that the community selected. We want to make sure that the things you're getting in terms of providing you data are truly aggregate-level responses, whether that's students themselves, so it's not just one student voice, but thousands of students, because we serve over 100,000 of them, whether it's a particular level, whether it's parents, whether it's business, community. So that's really a big body of work that we are attempting to really also pursue, is more avenues to get that type of feedback to you all, so that you can have, if you have critical questions, to be able to get you those insights from a larger aggregate and share that data transparently with you and with our larger community. So thank you for both of those questions, Ms. Juvenelli, I hope that answered how we would attempt to address still really deeply engaging with our at-large community, not just one group in DAC, but to bring it to different, utilize technologies to do a broader level of engagement as well.
One more thing too, regarding the SAC meetings. A lot of times, I find that SAC meetings are on Tuesday nights of our board meeting. And I always thought that was kind of conflicting and maybe done purposefully. I'm sorry, but I, that's how I felt, because it didn't allow opportunity for a parent, if they wanted to come, or even a teacher or staff, if they're having to attend that or whatever. So I think that, well, with one meeting a month, that should be easier for them not to have it on that night. So, and if that, that actually is on y'all, so. So if y'all could take care of that, that would be great. Thank you.
Ms. Persons?
Yep. The committees, it does get community input, but it's just from a few, just like the board meeting. And it's not saying it's not good input or anything like that. I think we need to engage the public a little bit more outside the committees, even if, whichever way we go. I think all of us should maybe think of doing a town hall in our districts at one of the schools, you know, at least one a semester or one a quarter, and get input. And if the district would help promote it, obviously, would be good. But I think that kind of feedback, I know when I go to a school, and the few town halls we've had, have been a lot better as far as talking to people. But I, you know, I'm fine either way, I think the subcommittees probably, to me, makes a little bit more sense. I think we should probably try that and see what happens, and then if it doesn't work, then we can always amend our policy without much effort to go back to the way it was. But I would love to see, if not all, maybe all the different committees, but most of them, be subcommittees of the DAC. I think would be the way to go, because it's such a wide, and I think you'd get a lot of good people there, except for like, we talked about the audit, because you need a very specific. The only committee that I've been on that makes no sense to me, committee members, please forgive me, is the construction committee, because it's all made up of people who do business with the district, either as a construction or as architects. There's only like two on there, I think, that are like retired and not involved, and I just, we really don't cover a whole lot, to me, that makes a whole lot of sense to have that. And so I don't know if that could be restructured in a different way or something under DAC, but that's the only one that I would say that I'm not looking forward to possibly seeing.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. I'm actually going to jump in and take privilege in this. I have a question for Dr. Savage that may help with some of the thinking here. There wouldn't be anything precluding us individually as board members for attending a subcommittee, would there?
No, because, so, and just to answer the prior, the, one of the things, site selection still has to occur as per a separate board policy, and so that would function there. So that is one function that would still kind of occur, and it would be within that DAC structure, both it has that kind of construction bent, as well as the equity diversity aspect that is essential, it's a part of that requirement as well. But to back to the question at hand, Mr. Fisher, yeah, certainly, board members are able to attend, those are something that, you know, it's just, you have the chance to hear the engagement live, that's often been the case for our board, that they do get to hear, and they get to hear some of that input directly from folks who are, and it's, and I know it was considered that it was parents, but it isn't always just parents, it can be any of those roles on that SAC to have that membership on there. So it isn't just a parent voice, it really is support staff, teachers, even administrators. In fact, students, in some cases, can be on the SAC as well, so students can be a part of that. It's intentionally diverse, it's intentionally inclusive of those different groups as well.
So following up on that, and I appreciate that, Dr. Savage, because one thing, we served on the committee for two years together, so. And one of the things for me, and that's why we'd be good with it. why we'd be good with it, I saw, you know, at least per policy, our role was simply there to listen, not to interject, just to listen to feedback. So I don't see how it would really be that different if we're still there listening and taking that feedback. It was not my role to interject or undergo anything, so, but Ms. Jordan had a question?
Yes, so the, the only problem with SAC is, it is, as Ms. Juvenelli said, it is your teachers, your students, students, teachers, school administration, but there's no outside business community, actually.
Yeah, they do, business community members, you're required to have two that can fit either community or business as well. So that's, that's, I'm saying, it really does include everyone. It, it truly is, and, and here's another advantage of it, encouraging some of the folks who, who want to contribute here, that are business and community, they can then get more directly connected to our schools. We have a lot of folks who are retired, who maybe haven't been in our schools in quite some time. This helps them bring their vantage point. Schools are always looking to recruit community and business people for their school SACs as well. It can be one of the more challenging roles to get, because the rest of them are constituents that are right there in your school. A lot of times, they have to rely upon friends or relatives of friends who say, "Oh, I know someone who I, who'd surely be able to do it." It then just connects people to, to different partners. So all of those are represented, and if we were to go down this road, we could make sure that that diverse representation is expected within the DAC as well, so you don't overrepresent one group. So you really do have a whole swath of not just the engaged school community, but the at-large community as well.
Ms. Jordan, real quick, Attorney Bree Bruno wanted to jump in real quick.
I just want to clarify something, because SACs are a creature of statute. So Florida Statute 1001.452 specifically states that it will be balanced appropriately with teachers, education support employees, students, parents, and other business, community, and community citizens. So it has to be a balance, and plus, it should be a representative of the ethnic and racial and economic communities served by the school. So that's required by statute.
Thank you for that. But how do, how does the community, how do, one, we would not be appointing anyone anymore, so that would go away. And then how would, how does the community know to get involved in the school, or a school, in order to be part of that statute that you just read? How do they even know that? Do we put that information out there to the world so that they understand, if you now want to be a part of the school district advisory, you need to connect with the school and get, get engaged with our schools? And, I mean...
So I can speak to that. So I served as a school-based administrator for 18 years here in the school district, and our job as principals is to get out into the community. That is your job. Number one, certainly to meet the statutory requirement. As principals, we are, we are in charge of making sure, just like board members and superintendents, to follow the law. Principals are charged with following law. We are so lucky, because our, our community is fantastic. There are so many community members that come to us at schools, but part of our job as principals was also to get out into the community. And so, no matter what community I serve, no matter what community most of our principals serve in, and I feel very confident speaking for them, because they want to follow the statute, too. They will get out and seek. They will talk to parents, they'll go visit with community members, they'll go to civic organizations. Our principals are in numerous boards and civic organizations throughout this community. So it is incumbent upon them, not just for SAC, but for other duties and other responsibilities that they are needing to fulfill at the school level, to get out into the community. A lot of them do through newsletters, websites, interactions with boards. Teachers are also very involved in these processes. I know I relied on my teachers, you know, you know that business, you know this person, you know that person, get out there. And so there were 108 of us out in the community, looking for those very best people to be on our SACs. And a lot of our principals exceed that requirement, too. Let me just speak to that for a moment. That's a minimum requirement. I've been to SACs personally, as a principal and also as a supervisor, going to visit SACs, and numerous times, I've run into SACs where there are more than one community member on there. So our, our schools do a very nice job, and even if they're not on a SAC, they do a great job of engaging. So do we have more to do on that? Absolutely. That's why we're bringing that other position onboard, but our principals get out there, they work very hard. And our job will be to continue to support that work.
Ms. President, and also, just to clarify, in addition to what Dr. Carlin said, the school board does have a responsibility as well. So the statute, and I'm just going to read the statute so that it's, it's on the record, the district school board shall establish procedures used by schools in selecting business and community members. That includes means of ensuring wide notice of vacancies, and of taking input on possible members from local businesses, chamber of commerce, community and civic organization and groups, and the public at large. The school board shall review the membership composition of each advisory council. If the district school board determines that the membership elected by the school is not representative of the ethnic, racial, and economic communities served by the school, the school board shall appoint additional members to achieve proper representation. So there is a role there for the school board.
And one additional piece I'd like to add to that, we do have team members that review our school advisory council compositions. So in academic services, we do have team members that go through those to make sure that they meet at least the minimum requirements. And like I said, many of our schools exceed that.
Ms. Jordan, then Ms. Juvenelli.
And thank you for that, both of you, for that information. However, I have been to SAC meetings where I've not seen anybody from the community there, so that still is a concern to me. And as far as the, the list, and, and Mr. Bree Bruno, I would love to have that, if you can send me that statute again, or, so that way I can read that, I would really appreciate it, that information you just gave us, because that is something I was not aware of, but I definitely will look, look at that as something that is our responsibility, and I do appreciate that. But I'm still a little bit concerned about community being, how do we pull them in and make sure that they're there?
Before Ms. Juvenelli, Dr. Carlin.
Yeah, so two things I would say, Ms. Jordan. One is, schools sometimes struggle with the same thing we've struggled with as a board. People will sign up, but they don't always show up, and that's something that you all have, you know, struggled with, and we've talked about that in our one-on-ones. The other thing I will say, and I'll go back to something Dr. Savage said, this is not the only way that we will secure our community input. So as a new superintendent coming onboard, one of the things that I feel like is very important is getting out there. And so not only, like, as an elected official, I'll be out there, you're out there a lot. I know we run into each other at, at events, and I know our board is out there. So we want to be asking those questions, but also, there'll be a series of ad hoc meetings, the committees that I will be setting up, to ensure that we get appropriate feedback, because that is another methodology used by high-performing districts, is bringing the, the community in for ad hoc purposes. So if we are working on the budget, I wrote down before, when we were looking at our investments, to have some of our community members that are very good in the area of finance to take a look at our financial investments, and to see, are there other avenues for us to explore? When we look at, you know, other types of opportunities within our district, I'm already thinking about, I want external voices looking at those, those pieces, you know, looking at results of our audits, and having them come back as a, as a community group and say, you know, a business community group, these are some things, Dr. Carlin, we think we can do better. You know, these are some other avenues. So I don't want us to be myopic and look only at the DAC or bust. There, there are multitudes of opportunities, and I think we can borrow some of the methodologies used at those high-performing districts, and we will do that.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you. So, interesting enough, I attempted to attend, when my daughter was still in, it was her last year in high school, I did, I was able to go to a couple of SAC meetings, but I found that not a lot of advertising is, is being done, and that the principal selects who he wants attending the, the meetings, and, at the time, and also, the principal also selected who was on DAC. So I felt like it was, you know, it was somewhat controlled, and, instead of open and inviting. And so I, I, I think that we need to figure out a better communication aspect. I have no idea, as a school board member, when my DAC, when any SAC meetings are for any of my schools, and I would like to know that I'm going to, I'm going to task you that I want them all. And because, and I think I want to invite, everyone needs to know, at this table, needs to know, like, especially the all-county seats, need to know when these meetings are. Not that they can attend every one, but they can probably focus on putting them on their calendar to have attendance, or to encourage someone else to go. And, I mean, if you want, that would be the communication aspect that I think is needed, because I don't know how else, if you're going to take something away, you're going to have to make something better to do that. I mean, I think that would be the end game, I, my understanding. So that's, I would like to know, like I said, when all the SAC meetings are. So, I mean, not that I can attend every one of them, but I will certainly attempt, attempt to do one, one month and one another month, obviously, because I got a funny feeling, they're going to be on the same Tuesday off of our Tuesday, my guess. So you just don't know, but I'm just saying, I got a funny feeling. So that would be, that would be most helpful. Thank you.
Happy to do it.
A little bit more than we got to close this out? Was, was that your, and Mrs. Chaviano?
Yeah, thank you. So, coming from my most current experience, I guess, coming onto the board, where I came from, from my daughter's school, I served on the PTO, and they combined those meetings, so they'd have PTO and SAC. And so every year, we actually meet on Wednesdays, so that was fortunate for us. But in those, for district advisories, we work in the room to see who's going to participate and take hold. So I guess in my experience, over the last four years, three and a half, in our PTO environment, I know it's, it's very open, you get a lot of good engagement in the beginning, and then it does fade off, I think, with every other committee. And so even with PTO and SAC, it's the same situation that you're, you're seeing now with committees, where you have that engagement, very excited in the beginning, super happy to be here, and then life gets in the way, things happen, and then that committee kind of falls to the sidelines. So I think, you know, seeing the way, you know, my children's school was run, and the engagement from that admin and staff, I know the communication was done via newsletters, via social media, we would do text, phone blasts with voicemails, so I was like, leverage everything to get everyone that you can possibly get, and tell them we will feed them, because if you feed them, they will come. So I think we have avenues to properly communicate when things are happening. I think it's on the schools to leverage those resources that they already have with their voicemail messages, and those text blasts that they can do. So we have it, I think it's just that initiative of them using them. But again, in the same essence, I think it was an issue of just getting that commitment, very exciting in the beginning, but then it fades out. But again, still very good engagement on the school base.
And Mrs. Chaviano, I would encourage you, I'm sure the rest of our board members, to give some input in your recent experience with Dr. Savage and Dr. Carlin, since you've literally just been in those roles, so. I'm going to ask Dr. Savage some questions, is there anything else before we? What I would ask, oh, Mr. Persson?
I just wanted, would it sort of be end up having like standing committees under the DAC? I would think there, there's certain ones we want to have every year, or would it be totally a little bit different? I mean...
So I think there are certain, some requirements, like, and, and just to clarify, an earlier point, I think one of the board members, it might have been board member Jordan, about the audit committee, just wanted to make sure I emphasize that the audit committee could serve, so some of what we currently ask our finance advisory to do, in theory, you could fold under audit committees. So it wasn't to say they're different, it's just to say that that's an opportunity, that was, it falls in the scope of something that could be looked at. You could be looking at that financial review. That said, for some of these other ones that we have, like strategic plan, you know, if you're in a season where the strategic plan is being renewed, like, for example, we have in the early spring, the new governance team will be having an opportunity to dig in much greater detail, and really allow a thorough review of kind of strategic plan outcomes, and have that revised. So that could be something that, in theory, the DAC could be, could play a role in collecting data and reacting to some of those data elements. So that would be something that's there. The equity and diversity aspect of it, you know, anytime we do site selection, planning for new facilities, that's, that's a required element of a different policy, so that would happen in there. So that would be a standing group that I could foresee within that particular group, just so that that policy's always being addressed. And in fact, in times where we haven't had it, that is a role that DAC had functioned, to address some of the site selection when EDAC was unavailable, hadn't been comprised, committed, that's when DAC existed, to support some of that as well. Curriculum, it's not necessarily a standing item, but if you had a curricular issue that needed some in-depth exploration, you'd have a, a good sampling of teachers who, who actually have to work with curriculum on a daily basis, in addition to parents, who then have to engage and help support their student as they engage with the curriculum, students themselves, as they may in fact speak to what it's like to engage in that curriculum on a daily basis. So it just has, or community members, what have they heard, what have they consumed through media? So you really get that diversity for those issues. But having as a standing issue, I would say, it's probably going to be, the recommendation would be more on the ad hoc basis, that they are, it's fluid, there's an opportunity to formulate it, if there's a need and a request, and it comes to the DAC from the board in that way. The other advantage, just to kind of reiterate for our board members, particularly for newer ones, the, the way the DAC is structured is a, it's a, it's a unique arrangement. DAC is comprised of, every single SAC provides one member to the DAC. So you have this ability to bring information that bubbles up to the DAC, and then the, the board has the ability to interact with the, the DAC and direct the DAC to bring issues back down to the school level as well. So it can also be an opportunity to have issues at our level, such as the school start times, that many schools may not even be aware of, for them to engage, and then they bring that information back to the SAC, so there is a group of that diverse constituency at the school-based level to then, and then they sometimes have to bring information back. So it becomes both a, a source of information and engagement in that kind of structure as well. So I just want to give you that as another food for thought, but, but realistically, for us, most of them would be done as, on an ad hoc basis, with the exception of the equity diversity advisory, but the rest of them, as you mentioned, the construction advisory really would be folded into site selection. You'd have your curriculum advisor should be ad hoc, your independent sales secretary is totally separate, not at all related to that, a finance advisory, which should essentially be dissolved, but it would go into, the audit committee would be able to look into any financial matters, because it's within the scope of their ability, and then the strategic plan would be, again, as an ad hoc, when it made sense to review strategic plan outcomes within that larger DAC structure as well. So I hope that helps answer the question.
Okay. Board members, and Dr. Savage, Dr. Carlin, unless there's objection, why don't we go forward? Dr. Savage, if you have enough of our input and information to perhaps put some kind of preliminary plan of what this could look like, and then come back to us, if that's all right? Is my board good with that, our board? The other thing, just in regards to that, we talk about input, again, I'm going to kind of springboard off Dr. Carlin in this, again, as elected officials, input is input, and we talk about this a lot, whether it's out here, whether it's up here, whether it's phone calls, whether it's text messages, whether it's social media, whether it's a student on the dais, whether it's at the soccer field, in fact. It is our job, and it's incumbent on us, to go out and seek that input. I treat all those, whether you're speaking here at the lectern, or whether you're speaking to me on the soccer field, I treat that equally. And it's incumbent upon us, as representatives of the people, to make sure we're going out in there and doing that. So I know you're very good about that, Ms. Jordan, so. So as we look at that, I just want to make sure that we are still continuing to gather input from our community. So, thank you, Dr. Savage, I appreciate it. Moving on, the next item on the agenda will be public input. Attorney Bree Bruno, please address the item of public input.
Ms. Chairman, school board policy provides the opportunity, at this point in the meeting, to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please provide it to staff. Public comment will be held at the podium in the central aisle in the front. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Abusive language defined as swearing, use of profanity, or name-calling is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone, per Board Policy 0169.1, and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. And, Mr. Chairman, there are two individuals that would like to address the board.
Thank you, Attorney Bree Bruno. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak in providing contact, information to staff or fault. These cards are located with the staff. Is there anyone in the audience who has not filled out a public comment card that wishes to give said public comment? Okay, seeing none, Attorney Bree Bruno, please begin public comments.
Thank you. The following individuals, please line up. Marge Cox, Madeline Stewart.
I'm Marge Cox, I'm a retired educator, I live in Bonita Springs, and I served on the curriculum committee last year. And as I listened to your conversation this afternoon about the committees, one of the things that I... about the committees, one of the things that really struck with me was something Ms. Jordan said about being sure the committee knows what they're supposed to do. Our chair last year, it was his second year, and he thought we were going to write curriculum. And I said to the school personnel that was there, "Are we not doing Florida's curriculum in Lee County?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Well, I assume, but you need to let the chair know, because he thinks we're gonna write it." I think being sure the committee really knows what it is they're supposed to be doing sounds really obvious, but it wasn't. And so I just, I, I want to encourage you to be sure regardless of the format that the committees are in, that they know what their task is. It, it was a very interesting year, and, and the school personnel did say after the break that, you know, we were not going to be writing curriculum. But it was like, somewhere along the line, seems like being sure they know what the purpose of the committee is, of, of whatever committee it is, is really key to it, maybe before they sign up. But I just, I, I appreciate your conversation, because we do all want what's best for Lee County students, and I think the committees can make a difference and can be helpful to you if they know what their charge is. So, thank you for all your work, your job is forever ongoing. Thank you. Have a good day and Merry Christmas, or Happy Hanukkah, or Kwanzaa, whatever it is you celebrate.
Good afternoon, I'm Maddie Stewart. Uh, I had something I was gonna say, but, uh, well, first of all, I wanted to congratulate all of you who are the newly-elected board and some of the old board members. I was struck by something that has been discussed, and this is what I think we're missing in Lee County. You can listen to what people say, but for us, to be able to hear you talk to each other is so, I would say, edifying, because we need to understand what you're thinking, too. That's really critical, I think. So, the communication that Mr. Savage, Dr. Savage is talking about, that's important, but we need to, the community needs to hear you all discuss these things as well. And not everybody, I love the idea of having these local, district-wide, whatever, wherever they would be, where people could actually see the whole board, they could come out, not everybody can come to a school board meeting, you know that. They could watch it on TV, but it's over. What are they gonna do then? So we make comments, you don't have to comment on what we say. Okay, that's understandable. However, we need to hear the discussion among all of you, because that's what tells us what you're thinking, and we need to know that as well. Thanks so much.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. Thank you, everyone, for your public comments, they're truly appreciated. At this point, we're gonna move on to good of the order and public comment. I promised I would start at the opposite end with, uh, Jose.
So, what was the question again?
If you wanted to, remember, we had talked about before, if you wanted to go over anything in particular about your experience?
Um, so this obviously is a new experience for me, uh, first time being up here, although I have been on the opposite side before a few times. Um, but to actually be here and hear all the, you know, uh, different areas of what you guys actually discuss and work on, it's very, uh, opening, um, to someone like me. I like to take the opportunities and, uh, anything I can, I like to know about. But what I learned a lot about today is mostly, you know, health and how the food department really helps the schools and cares about the students. Um, but I think there's kind of a, a lack of students understanding, like, how they help, uh, the students themselves. Um, so I think, you know, at, like, advertisement on the department's side probably could be, you know, beneficial to students to understand, like, why the schools serve the food that they do, um, because some students real, don't really care or have the need to take care of themselves, and then, uh, yeah, that's what really struck out, uh, most to me today.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for your comments, and thank you for being up here, we really appreciate you. So, we're gonna move on to Mrs. Javiano.
Well, we were all FSBA last week, so that was great to get, um, to meet other school board members in other districts and kind of learn and see how they operate, and it was nice to kind of connect outside of that and brainstorm and, and, and talk about things. And it was nice to be with everyone, um, freezing our butts off in Tampa for a week. Um, but a lot of good information, um, to kind of take back and really process here in our roles, at least myself and Bill, um, on how we can be the best board members for the Lee County School District, so, that was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Picking back a little bit on the SBA, uh, but the superintendents were also there, so it was nice talking to our superintendent. Also ran into Dr. Bernier, who was there, and also, Dr. Atkins was there. So I, three superintendents I got to talk some to, and it was very interesting. Uh, I'm mentoring a school board member, a brand-new one from Duval County, and he's an interesting gentleman, but I'm looking forward to that. Uh, so there's mentorship, and I'm sure Vanessa got a mentor, and, and so did Mr. Ribble, even though they didn't think he existed there for a little while. So he came up, said, "Who's this Will Ribble?" But, uh, it, it really is, the connections you make are probably more important than the actual seminars, even though there was an excellent one put on by our attorney. So thank you for that on First Amendment rights. So it was a very great, great time up there and well worth the effort. That's all.
Mr. Persons, Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Jose, thank you for being here, uh, thank you for your comments, really appreciate you being here. Uh, and yes, I was at FSBA as well, uh, learned a lot, and I will share my other comments, because ever since I've been back, we've had a lot of things happening in the community, and, um, I'll share those later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Yeah, I also want to thank you for sharing your afternoon here with us, and it was enlightening. But I'm gonna save my comments for this evening, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ribble. Ms. Juvenelli?
I don't have a lot either. Um, I know that Amor and I attended the grants, um, ceremony, and Debbie, you were there, right, too, the three of us, before FSBA? Trying to think, I know I attended my granddaughter's and Debbie's grandson's, um, National Honor Society Elementary School celebration, that was at Edison Park, that was, that was actually very nice, they did a nice little event. Um, and I, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the, um, the food. Uh, I was, we cited about the presentation, um, but I still think we're, that we have to do better, like, I, that's all, that was all packaged food. In fact, it reminded me of like gas station food. That's what I thought of, and it, it actually wasn't bad, but that's not what, that's not what we need to be eating, or that's not setting the tone for, because that's all the children are gonna like. I, like, uh, one of my daughter's friends, granddaughter's friends only eats chicken nuggets. I'm talking, that is all she eats, is chicken nuggets. And her mother caters to that, and I, I just, like, my granddaughter, who likes to eat everything, because she's presented everything. I think that's what we need to do more of that in the schools, is presenting food, and it may not be their, they may not like it now, but they may like it later. Like, I have memories of things that I like from high school, that, in high school, from school food, that, my grandmother was a Benita Springs cafeteria worker, and she made the best yeast rolls in your life. Now, that's not quite healthy, but they were the best. But I mean, even another thing that's my favorite today as an adult, which y'all might not like, but they used to serve a bed of lettuce and a scoop of tuna salad. And today, I still eat, that's the way, if I could have tuna salad, that's the way I eat it. And I mean, that's something that my mother never did, really, you're not, might not get that at home, but I mean, it's something I love today, like, I love a good tuna salad with that. But I mean, so my point is, if you expose children to better food, they're going to, they're gonna have that opportunity to try it, and then the exposure is huge. Otherwise, they're gonna eat a burrito out of a package and a piece of pizza, or a, um, you know, a, a, what was the other thing? Oh, actually, the, the rice and the chicken was pretty good, actually. I ate all mine, just for the record. But, um, but my point is, I think the exposure, and we're not exposing them, you can't expose them to have pizza every day, because that's all they're gonna eat, like chicken nuggets. So I mean, I think that we really need to look into more fresh, and we do not have enough of the farm-to-table schools to help with that. So ever how we can, we can explore that opportunity and look for grants that are gonna give, put more, put more money back at the school to put it back on the table is gonna be really important. And that's really what I wanted to talk about, because, I mean, I know these ladies, they're, they're doing the best they can with what they have and heating it up, but, like I said, my grandmother would go in there early in the morning, and she made pans and pans of, um, fresh, um, yeast but rolls that were, unlike my mouth's watering just thinking about it, but we'll have to skip that. But anyways, I just wanted, just wanted to comment that the exposure is huge, and we don't want kids in their adulthood only eating pizza and chicken nuggets and wrapped-up burritos. Thank you. And Ms. Fleming's not here, I know she would have added to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli, and 100% agree with you with that, so I'm, uh, looking forward to seeing what we can do with that. So I have two items of business, I'm gonna leave the rest of, uh, our exciting times for tonight. So, first order of business, Attorney DeBree Bruno had emailed you in regards to, um, our board manual for protocols. So one of the things I wanted to bring up, at least for today, and this is always an evolving, ongoing process, I would ask, um, and for the, uh, new board members, we used to have briefings and workshops, and the briefings had comments in it. We combined essentially workshops and briefings now into this model. Uh, before, the briefings were one, but run by the vice chair, and the regular meetings were run by the chair. So I would ask for the support of this board to amend our protocol manual that the vice chair goes back to running these workshops, so.
I support that.
We good with that? Say. I don't know if that's with, uh, you and Dr. Carlin and Dr. Savage, I don't know. Okay, so that order of business, and, and feel free, we can always bring forward, oop, Ms. Jordan, sorry.
Can we take a vote on that here? With the protocols, because?
So, we, you never vote on your protocols?
Okay.
So, protocols are usually something that you work on during your workshop, and then you take, um, you kind of, we get from the conversation which direction the board wants to move forward. So what I just saw was that the board wanted to move forward with, um, allowing the vice chair to lead the workshops.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we also have other protocols that we need to look at as well, because of the change of the makeup of these meetings as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, then at that place, then for the January workshop, then the vice chair will be running this meeting, if everyone's in agreement, so. Next item of business, just as a refresher, I would ask for, um, we were looking obviously at having our own board...
Mr. Chairman, I just need some clarification there?
Sorry.
Because I, I heard something else about the protocol manual, so, that's what I, I, what do you want to, because I, I just heard Ms. Jordan say something about additional changes. So what direction do we have with regards to that? How do you want to handle that?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, well, we, because of the fact that we have changed this, there are some items in our protocol that will take us now three months to take care of, because there's only one meeting. And I know we came across that the other day when I was speaking, uh, with the superintendent regarding, um, someone bringing, uh, like a mentor of the year for the awards that we do, but our protocol says that we have to have it in XYZ, but now it will be far past that timeframe because of the fact that there's one meeting to even have that conversation.
My suggestion on this would be...
Yes, I'll look at it.
Yeah, my suggestion is, why don't we, as individual board members, bring up any issues? We have the protocol manual, and Dr. Carlin, if you and your staff would be able to review those with us?
Yes, I was gonna make that suggestion, if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that we have you bring any items that you see as glaring discrepancies or any decisions that you think we need to, like, look at as a board, bring those, if you would, to your one-on-one with, with, with me, and then we will gather those together, and then we can put those out as like a proposal for, for, you know, for future meeting discussion. Okay?
Anything else? Okay. Go ahead.
Talking about changes, so, what we didn't really talk, talk about was when, with the, with the committees and liaisons, we still have, I know that the new board members are taking over from where the old board members, but we've, we've surpassed that time, and we almost going to be, a, a, going to be a year, an extra year on top of having the, and I think we need to be changing things up, like, and giving opportunity, like, I'm on DAC, but I certainly think that other people should have that opportunity to be on DAC, and, as well as, um, there's the insurance task force, now, that's Mr. Ribbles, but I mean, if that's what he wants to want, maybe he would want to be on something else. And there's the school health, um, advisory that, um, Ms. Fleming's on, but, um, I know we just voted in the, uh, value adjustment board person, so that's probably taken care of, but you still have learning for life, which I'm on that, there's on common friends, a governing board, um, that has been Ms. Jordan for a long time, that, I mean, there's things that do need to change. And we, we get stagnant, and I don't think we give opportunity for other people, I, I just think that that should happen.
Ms. Juvenelli, again, uh, my suggestion, on the prior board, I'd asked actually for that to change during November, and there wasn't support for that at the time, that would have changed for this. So, my suggestion at the moment, unless anyone disagrees, why don't we talk about, um, do we have a little bit of time, maybe at our next workshop, to go through, um, figure out, you know, some of the, uh, uh, committees, as well as the exterior organizations we go to, and then have a brief discussion on that, and then we can see if anybody, you know, wants to change and go forward with that, so.
Wait, and I'm sorry, when did, when did you say you asked about that?
Prior board, I did.
But that's prior board, now we have two board, new board members?
No, I know, I didn't have any support at that point, so.
Uh, well, I mean, I don't think the change with old board, I think it should have happened, it should happen now.
Because that was my concern, is every time there's a reorg or anything, it always happens in November, so I felt we should be making these changes in November, so.
That is, that is true, and, um, and that's when they were done, and they were changed one year, a couple of years ago during the summer, and that was, that was what I mentioned at that time, if I'm now, I'm, I'm thinking clearly, and it, I believe it should go back to November, because that's when change happens, you know, with, regarding board members, you know what I mean? And, and, and so, I mean, I just don't think that, and like I said, I'm more than willing to share the, the wealth and the knowledge, that's all, and that's what I'm trying to do. Thank you.
100% agree, and I would be 100% on board with that. So why don't we, uh, bring forward, and obviously, if anyone has any discussions with, uh, Dr. Carlin with that, or Attorney DeBree Bruno, and we can make some time in January, if that's all right, so.
Absolutely, down in the January.
Before I move on to my next item of business, is there anything else in regards to that? Okay, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, board auditor. Obviously, we were in the process of trying to hire a board auditor, did not want to think we've forgotten this, uh, the last board agreed that it would be proper for us as a new board to make that decision, since there would be one working with this board. So, um, what I would ask is to the continued ability last time from the board members to kind of continue to, to head and pilot this project, where we go, again, to making sure, collecting current applicants, and then figuring out, um, the criteria, working with Chief Montomuro on that, I would like to continue doing that, um, you know, going through, uh, rubrics and setting up a, a pattern of meetings that, in order to figure that out, so. Does anyone have an objection to that? Ms. Juvenelli?
I don't have objection to that. I would actually ask now, that, since this process has been taking some time, if we could get an updated list, like, who's still in and who's still out, and that kind of thing as well, because I think, you know, who knows, someone could have already have taken a job, so, um, that they, they're not gonna leave to come here for, so, or, or they're still interested. So I just think that updated information, but I would love to get this, quick kick in this can, as you know I've mentioned before.
100%, and that would be my first order of business with that, so. Unfortunately, the two hurricanes really impacted that, so.
Yeah.
But, um, is everyone all right with that, if I continue on with that work? And if I could work within your staff, Dr. Carlin, to, um, figure out some of those issues?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Um, that is all I have at the moment, I'll move on to Attorney DeBree Bruno.
Well, um, Jose, right? Jose?
Yes.
I saw that you wanted to, um, become, I guess, go to the Naval Academy and join the United States Navy?
Yes.
That got my attention, because my husband is retired Navy, so, we're big Navy people at, at the House, and so I, I see you doing a lot of things that are great leadership for that, with the brigade commander, and being senior, senior class president and member of NHS, so, that's totally awesome, you're definitely on the right path. And I, again, am a fan of the Navy, so, I think it's a great, great... I, again, am a fan of the Navy, so I think it's a great, great way to boot forward. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is that Attorney DeBree Bruno?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to double check, Dr. Carlin.
I just have one quick order of business, and it, uh, ties into the conversation today, so each quarter, we want to give the district advisory committee a, um, some direction on where they need to, or where we could benefit from their input, and so for quarter three, we will be asking for input around our student code of conduct. Uh, student services will be working closely with DAC to get input onto potential changes, and any, any other ideas that they have for our code of conduct, so that'll be quarter three, and that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Um, future meetings, today we have a student performance at 5:40.
Oh, so just one little, um, process clarification, so Dr. Carlin has made a recommendation in terms of the student code of conduct, now we just want to make sure, excuse me, that the board members are okay with that recommendation.
Board members, do you have any objection to that recommendation?